Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to introduce to the Board Anne Schroeder. She is our new HR Director. Today is her first day on the job, so we thought we'd throw her to the wolves right off. Anne has an impressive background and education I wanted to just share with you. She has an Associate of Applied Science degree from South Central Technical College in Mankato, also went back and got a Bachelor's Degree in Business Management from Rasmussen College in Eden Prairie, Minnesota. She served as a Service Coordinator for several years with the ABI Systems and worked herself up in the organization to become Branch Manager with ABI Systems, where she served in that role for about eight years or so. With a passion for getting into government service, she transitions her career and became the HR Coordinator for the city of Prior Lake. And there she has worked for about eight years since 2015. There she conducted all of the oversight and management responsibilities for Human Resources with a hundred and full, full-time and part-time employees, forty seasonal staff members, eighty election judges, thirty paid on-call firefighters, counselors, and advisory members. She is a notary public, which is great because it's nice to keep that in the office. Linda was a notary as well. And she's also certified IPMA professional as well. So just wanted to introduce Anne and let her say a few remarks. Be kind to her.
Hello, everyone. I am just very appreciative for this opportunity and I look forward to bringing my past experience into this position and kind of going to the next level with the county and everything. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good to have you aboard.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I identify future work meeting topics. Joe?
Yeah, this would be hopefully for our next meeting, August fifteenth. HR Director, additional hours for transition slash onboarding work. I think next meeting would be a good time to figure out if we need to keep Linda on for the, for the new person that was just introduced. So, that's it.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to the first item of other business here, Minnesota DNR update.
All right, good afternoon Chairman, Commissioners. I thank you for this time to talk to the Minnesota DNR. My name is Teresa Ebbingay. I am the Regional Director for the Northwest Region of the Department of Natural Resources. And today I'm just here to do a meet and greet. I'm going around to all of the counties in the Northwest Region, which is kind of the Northwest corner of the state, and introducing myself, introducing some of our staff, and just wanting to open it up for any type of opportunities or discussions or questions that the Commissioners may have. So with that, I would like to have my staff introduce themselves, if you're okay with that.
That's fine. Be good. Eric?
I am Anne Burge, the regional manager for Parks and Forests.
Good afternoon. I'm here, you're awesome, man, or about regional plan. Well, Cheryl, if you know, you know, the land, the land.
Well, I am blind. I make the regional law. I have my own saving desk, and the regional manager, there should be five, probably five.
All right, and with that, were you guys able to have the handout, the flyer in your packet? If not, I have some copies here.
Yes.
Okay. I'm not going to read every word, so save you that. But I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. As you see here, we have quite a bit of state-administered lands within Beltrami County. About twenty-nine percent of your land base here in the county is state-administered land, about seven-hundred-and-eleven-thousand acres. We do pay, the, the state does pay approximately two-point-six million in payment in lieu of taxes. We also have consolidated conservation lands within Beltrami County, and so you can see some of the payments there that, that the county receives from those consolidated conservation lands and the revenue that is received off of those lands. There's a bunch of different land management types. I'm not going to go through it all, but you can read those on your own. We do have a hundred and eight full-time staff and a hundred and eight part-time and seasonal staff that are employed here in Beltrami County. As you probably know, this year, Lake Bemidji State Park is celebrating their one-hundred-year anniversary. We've had two different celebrations so far. And it's a great place. If you have not been out there, please, we would welcome you to come in and join us at the park. It's a wonderful area. We also wanted to highlight that we have now the Public Water Access Decontamination Station at Upper Red Lake is, is ready to go and functional. So that'll help with aquatic invasive species issues coming into the county. There's several more on that page, and also kind of some opportunities on the second page that we wanted to highlight is that we continue, of course, to work on chronic wasting disease. Unfortunately, last year, there were a couple of positives that were located just south of here in Hubbard and in Beltrami County. So we continue, of course, to work on that. We also realized that there was the first, the deer farm that was just north of here that also had the contamination of CWD. And we did a ton of work there to try to fence off the area and try to hone in that. So those are a few things that I wanted to highlight, and then now I just want to open it up and see if you guys have any questions, and we have our staff here to, to help answer.
I know one of the things that we've been asked in the past by some of our constituents, because we're always, as you mentioned, a lot of our land is tied up in federal land or county land or whatever, and they say, when are you going to sell some of this? And that's one of the questions I guess I'm asking you. Are there any opportunities coming up where you plan on, as a group, selling some DNR land?
That is a great question, Commissioner. We always do what, we have a program called our Strategic Land Asset Management Program in which we continually look at our portfolio of our lands, and if there are lands that no longer meet our mission, meet any of the goals that are associated with, with that strategic land asset management, then we place those up for auction. And I'm going to turn it over now to Cheryl, and she can talk a little bit more about that. Yeah, or is any sale of land that?
You know, so we just actually, they, well, then we still, twice a year, maybe, the last three, four years. Most recently, the last year and a half, by the midday process, through the admin. Rather than a public auction, last time, we had a bigger sale here, the part of Bell County, tiny, actually, this one was great. But that was the first option, which become very labor intensive, and ask cost, and part of all. So we've been having our most recent option online, which have been very, very difficult. The next sale will probably be this later this fall, I possibly not remember. I don't know, I don't expect any, though, I mean, probably pass upon, but it's a continuous review process that the divisions go through. Each ministry division that is wildlife, for example, that administer land, as their holster, and not doing their business, they've done a lot of purple, as doesn't meet the criteria for which we have required or can use it for, will offer that after we do the sale. Some of the issues that we can have, as you know, in this kind of, a lot of time, on land, there are those lands that such near tax law, and we share revenues. So we pay both to the county, and then we actually use such a blocking utility license, and the lease of anything that, for allowing use for a lot of them, of course. We share the revenues with the county as well. So we're usually pretty careful about putting a contract vessel, so selling it when I did the immediate, the tax rule, the revenues that would be generated, maybe some of the other leases that we can type we use, as compared to what we pay in, in those. So, but that's basically the general, just how we approach that.
Yep.
You know, and sometimes how we acquire land, like if there are tax law plans, those are all have to solve the public action, and the office of plan, and have to manage those, the features, so. And we don't sub any of those, as long as they're generating that we, for this.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make a comment that, you know, I if, you know, and, you know, con kind of lines ever do come up for sale, it's something that I, you know, might not be in favor of because a lot of my constituents do appreciate, you know, the, the ability to, you know, collect some of their revenue to distribute amongst organizations within, you know, my districts, so, you know, kind of walk a fine balance there when it comes to, you know, the con con.
Anyone else? Any other Commissioner? I guess I, I have another question, because it's more pertinent to the county.
Sure.
We have like a hundred and twenty-one acre parcel in Woodrow Township for sale, but the DNR has denied providing an access to the state, from the state land to access this parcel. And I guess I just want to know what, what, what is the philosophy of the DNR when this happens? You know, we're surrounded by DNR land, and yet it's up for sale. It would be nice to get that back on the tax rule.
So if I'm understanding your question, basically, there's like an in-hole thing around, and that's surrounded by state lands, and there's no legal access to that property.
Correct.
Cheryl, would you like to talk about the process of that?
Yeah, I think, and I understand, you're learning, I'm definitely old, no, I'm swinging. I don't know which vessel, and so, it is, it's anybody who's been, sort of, surrounding that, actually, with different access. That we would start with the land administrator. Typically, we don't allow decent access to, to our lands for private, you know, to get new access, probably, that's not the means. Not going to most situations, and, 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 you know.
No, I guess I just wondered if it was general philosophy that you didn't.
Well, you know, and, like I said, typically, we, in order to increase part value for private, you know, we don't grant access. A lot of times, we're doing the other government, and it's like, if it's all in the tax order, if it's all we will ask to, we give us all the time, ask to retain an access for, get back, and then it's our land. The same thing would happen, but if it's for an actual sale, that might then be the decision, you know.
If you know more, yeah, okay. So who would we contact if we wanted to find out more on that?
It depends upon the land, once, are you thinking of, then I
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll leave my cards with you too, and, and.
Sure.
Is this plan, they're talking about the strong by state then, is that, is that all right on that?
Yes.
Seems like maybe the state of Minnesota would be interested in.
Yeah, maybe.
There we go.
Okay, solution. I knew there'd be something.
Yes.
Yeah.
Talking about opportunities. There you go. Any other questions?
Yeah, and if people do need to communicate with you, is it better to go telephone, text, or what's the, the best route? Because I have also heard some complaints about folks not getting, you know, a response or whatever, and sometimes I understand from my perspective, I may have done something incorrectly to not get, you know, the, the word out, but is there any particular method that's better than the other?
It, you know, every, all of our employees are under different, different circumstances, but if you never, if, if there is someone that doesn't, again, I'll give you my card.
Excellent.
I answer all my phones, all my texts, all my emails. I have what's called an open door policy. So anytime anyone wants to talk to me or anything about any situation, I'm available.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone else? I guess we're done?
Oh, my goodness, okay.
That was great. Well, it's been a long day. Honesty, honesty.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, and now we go to Kichigami.
Hi, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me here again today. So we have a more solidified budget draft for you today than we have last time I was here. So the actual total costs around the region really have not changed within Beltrami County. We are still taking the same overall amount from the cities and the counties, but the way that we divvied that financial responsibility among the cities versus the county did change a little bit. So this presentation includes just some of the very much approximates. We're looking at about a five percent wage increase, which is made up of a two percent cola, excuse me, a three percent cola adjustment, as well as our usual two percent steps for our employees. The Bemidji Public Library is looking at about a seven percent increase over last year. Black Duck is trying to add a couple of service hours, so they're looking at about an eighteen percent increase over branch cost in 2023. We are continuing our county levy buydown program for 2024. So again, that's a dollar amount that we're going to reduce your levy bill by in order to help keep it at a reasonable level for you. If you look at the next page, there are some budget updates. So this is changes since the last time you saw me. So we are changing the way that we divide our costs among partners. Our branch managers made original requests for improvements. That initial draft was created with those costs. But our Kichigami Budget Committee, which is made up of all of our county commissioners, they kind of talked about the budget, and they decided to tie the city levy costs to the branch increases. So if your branch is going to be five percent better, I want you to pay five percent more, the city. So what we did this year was we went ahead and tied those two together. And the way the Kichigami budget works is that whatever branch costs are not paid by the city, they go to the county budget. So I just scroll down to the next change there. You can see the Black Duck Community Library, and we're adding some service hours. We're increasing a little bit of staff hours. There's some changes in our collection. Overall, the Black Duck Community Library is asking for an eighteen percent increase in branch costs. We're asking the city for an eighteen percent increase in their levy, and then that does leave you, oh gosh, sorry, my scrolling thing is like right in the way. And then that does leave you at eight, about eighteen percent increase of the cost that you had paid for Black Duck's library last year. So that's that bottom line there. For the Bemidji Public Library, we are trying to add a little bit of custodian hours. We're increasing some insurance stipends. We're increasing training budgets. The branch itself is looking at about a seven percent increase over 2023. So we are again asking the city levy to increase theirs over 2023 by seven percent. For county levy requirement, you're looking at about a nine-point-three increase in what we would ask you to pay to cover the Bemidji Public Library over 2023. As you continue down, you see the overall budget for Beltrami County. Again, that does show that we do have that county levy buydown program continued. Our initial draft request for the county was a little over four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. By adjusting the levy request for the cities, that levy request has actually gone down a little bit to four-sixty-seven, two-eighty-two. So you can see we're asking Bemidji to pay an overall increase of about seven percent, Black Duck an overall increase of about eighteen percent. And then of Beltrami County, this currently is asking about eleven percent. So I've already received feedback that in general, Beltrami County is targeting a lower levy than that indicated by the Kichigami budget. And I've been asked to kind of start creating some opportunities to find ways to reduce that. I think a lot of that is going to shake out as we speak with our city partners as well. So Black Duck, would you like your library to have two more hours? Okay, how much more of the bill are you willing to foot to make that happen? So talking to them about how we can get those needs met, and then if we cannot get those needs met through our city and county partners, coming up with alternative ways. What do we need to push to next year? What sort of things do we need to find alternate ways to fund? So this is where we are at now. We do have another Kichigami Board Meeting in September, and then another one in November. So what I would ask of you is to please give your feedback to me. You can reach me by phone, by email, by just about any method you mean. Also, Commissioner Booth is on our Budget Committee, so you can also feed all of that through him. As we start receiving that feedback from our city and county partners, we'll get another Budget Committee together to say, here's what we're hearing, here's the kind of plans that we need to make in order to make those adjustments. So what I can do is if we hear back from the partners in Beltrami County that we need to look at reductions, then I will try to put together a couple of different plans to say, hey, we could do this. You'd end up about seven percent. We could do this. You'd end up about five percent. So we can try to reach those targets and let you know how we can accomplish that. We can also talk with our city partners just to find out, are these levels of levy increase acceptable to you? Would perhaps a little bit more be acceptable to you? Just to find out. Again, we are all partners holding hands in this library endeavor, and I want to make sure that our levies are appropriate for all of our partners. So I very much welcome your feedback in improving these plans, and I will bring that feedback to our Kichigami Budget Committee.
Yeah, any questions or comments? Jim?
Mr. Chair, so I guess was the request sent to the Budget Committee, or I'm just kind of curious on how we're receiving this presentation? With, you know, I mean, because in the past, the requests I always went to the Budget Committee and, and not, you know, the whole board, so I'm just kind of, kind of lost on how how this came about.
Correct. Mr. Chair, the reason this topic is coming directly to the Board is because of the concerns and the way the process went last year in regards to the Budget Committee. You are correct, Commissioner Sumner, that the Budget Committee has traditionally received these other jurisdictional requests like KRLS separately, and that the Budget Committee then evaluates those requests and makes a recommendation that was done last year. The Board, well, the Budget Committee actually was the one that did not agree initially with the increase. It was a pretty significant increase at that time. There were concerns that were discussed that the increase was not warranted based on the reserve amounts that were left. There was a direction given to staff to evaluate the financials of KRLS. And that continued to raise questions about whether or not the request made was something that the, the Board was going to be wanting to approve. As you know, that came directly to the Board after the Budget Committee made a recommendation to not increase. Friends of the library came out and spoke with their opposition that there would be no increase, and the Board was embroiled in some back and forth conversation on the issue. So to avoid all of that, Melissa and I have agreed that it would make sense to bring the discussion to the Board first and have you set the expectations of the Budget Committee in and around what the level should be, so the Budget Committee doesn't make a recommendation outside of what the broader Board is willing to approve, and thereby avoid all of the, you know, conversation and delay. Remember, we had to put two levy requests last, last year together for you to consider, and that worked itself through. So what we're trying to do is avoid all of that and give you opportunity to give direction to the Library Board in regard, and the Budget Committee, in regards to what you're willing as a county to, to bear in regards to increases in the levy.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I can, another follow-up question or, or two for, for Melissa. How much remains in the reserve?
Oh, so we are currently going through our 2021 audit process, and our auditors adjust those reserves through the audit process. So I could give you like the same numbers you had last time, pretty much. So we have reduced them. Again, in our 2021, we had gosh, about two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars out to our county partners for our county levy buydown program. We've done some other things to make sure that we're using that money wisely. So we have added an outreach assistant to be paid from our reserves to our mobile library. Gosh, what else? We have our capital appropriation policy by which cities can request capital improvements to their libraries. Man, trying to even add it all up. It's definitely reduced it by a decent amount here.
Okay, so if I, if I remember correctly, the reserves amounted to maybe what, four and a half years, I believe?
Four and a half years?
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Of like operation, you're saying?
Yeah.
Hmm, I'd have to double-check those numbers, yeah, but I, I think it was, it's certainly a higher amount that we would like. And the Kichigami Board is working on that. We put together a fund balance policy this year to begin using, so that we will have the Board guiding direction on any overages and any reserves going forward, to make sure that that does not continue to happen, so.
And, Mr. Chair, last question. So last year, your, your proposal was four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, and I believe that that was a twenty-thousand-dollar increase from the year before, correct?
Yes, it was a decent increase. We had an incoming union, and new staff wages were going to be going up at that time.
Okay, so.
We had a significant increase.
So in, in the past two years with that, with the 2024 proposal, that would be an increase of, I believe, sixty-seven-thousand dollars in two years? Okay. Want to make sure that I'm reading, reading that correct. To me, that seems like a pretty steep increase. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So um, do we get an opportunity to see the entire budget of care? As long as we're members, I mean, all we're, all we're seeing is is these numbers. I guess I would like to see what's going on and out with all the other partners.
Sure.
And then also the fund balances that Commissioner Sumner was talking about.
Yeah, and all of that information was also included in our last board packet. It does have all of those budgets that were passed. Um, so I, Commissioner Gould can also share that with you, but I have to send that information out. Yeah.
Commissioner Gould? Um, I guess I would just kind of reiterate uh what Administrator Barry had said. All of this coming to the meetings, Melissa, twice now, it is, it's an effort to increase communication, increase transparency, improve the process from last year. And, you know, I can say with confidence that that, that's what we're striving for here. Um, the Budget Committee with the county here will be discussing the latest proposal. Um, and again, this is a moving target, depends on what City of Bemidji says, what City of Black Duck says too. So um, again, it's just, we're kind of a, maybe a quarter of the way through the process still. So um, all of this is just to um, increase communication and and uh um, provide an opportunity for the board to um, give their feedback. And she's also, Melissa's also going to other counties um and and doing this across the system, so um. Yeah, that's what I just have to say about that.
I would probably say in general, I'm I'm making an effort, an effort to improve, improve communication across all partners. If city money, county money flows along that line, communication needs to too. I don't want the first you see of me to be a signature on the bottom of a levy request. You know, we need to know each other and know that we are working towards similar goals, improving the lives of our constituents.
Okay, okay, any other questions? Um, I guess the question I have as I'm sitting here listening to the discussion is where do we get to that point, Tom, of bringing this into the Budget Committee? So that there is the same standard that we're using for all groups, you know? Uh, I don't, I don't quite see how that's pulled together.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. The, the process would be such that this, whatever the levy amount is that the uh Library Board ultimately recommends would be brought to the Budget Committee for consideration. The Budget Committee would look at a number of different things, including uh, as we did last year, the uh spend rates. We looked at the audit that they had, their reserve amounts, uh, the increases year over year. We compare those to uh increases that the county has achieved year over year. You might recall, our levy has been growing roughly by about four to six percent. Uh, the library's levy has been growing much more aggressively than that, so there is a reconciliation that's done at the Budget Committee. And then a recommendation is ultimately made that the Budget Committee then sort of votes on and makes that recommendation to the broader board. Um, it is, that is kind of the process that works with other organizations that make requests. Uh, the difference, I think, here is that other organizations tend not to increase their requests. They stand, take, stand, uh, tend to stay fairly flat. So there doesn't tend to be much concern or dialogue uh in regards to those other organizations. This particular organization's request uh catch the attention of the Budget Committee because they grow rapidly. And so that's what we're trying to get a sense of here by the broader board is to get you as the board to give direction to the Budget Committee on what your tolerance is in regards to an increase, if any, by the Library Board. Um, you might recall, it was a pretty sizable increase last year that uh Budget Committee recommended against. And uh, also, you might recall that there is a statutory requirement that is more than half the required amount to be paid that is being paid by the county. And that was another area of concern uh that the, the Budget Committee ultimately had. So those things all get evaluated. The Budget Committee will make a recommendation. But uh, what happened last year is when that happened and the Budget Committee followed the process and made the recommendation. Um, then things kind of went awry with certain members of the Commission uh, who weren't involved in the Budget Committee, had different ideas about how things maybe wanted to progress. So uh, that ensued a conversation at the board level. And so that's what we're trying to do here is let's get, let's get direction from the board before we go and get direction after the board. And after the budget's been pretty well set, because we're running the clock here. We have to get you the preliminary budget. And you, you have to approve the preliminary levy before September thirtieth of this year. So I don't know if that gives you additional context or information, but what we would like is, what are you, what are your thoughts? What's the target, if any, for an increase uh to the library? And uh, that's what we'll have to run on in the levy projections and figure out where the county's levy comes in based on those inputs.
Mr. Chair. Uh, Tommy, you mentioned the, the state statute. And if you can, can you remind me what the, the state minimum is?
Oh, I should have had that brought up.
I have it right here.
It's close to sixty-two for Beltrami.
Two sixty.
I think it's pretty close to that, yeah.
Okay. And uh, one more question for Tom. So um, you know, we're having these uh outside uh partnerships coming in to present their, their budgets. Would that be the same or maybe um, RH or or uh, I believe uh, I think there's a couple other community programs that present their budgets to them.
The extension.
Yeah, so, so would, would they be afforded the same opportunity? Because I know that they have, you know, requests year after year too. And, you know, I just want to be fair to everybody and and also try to avoid the, the situation that we uh found ourselves in the last year, you know? So I do appreciate uh, uh, Melissa and, you know, Tom's willingness to, to come uh before the board. But uh, you know, there's some, some concerns I have as well.
Mr. Chair, if I could, uh, the extension is afforded the same opportunity. It goes through the Budget Committee. They provide their own budget. Uh, they've provided a budget this year that essentially is flat, so they're not making any additional requests this year. Uh, and then uh probation and uh other, other operational or outside operational. Um, jurisdictions also come in and make presentations. Tris, Tris Hanson also made that presentation for um, her operation. So we do have that built into the Budget Committee. We don't necessarily have KRLS come and sit into the Budget Committee. They just give us their, their number that they think, based on their work, that they need to have uh an adjustment. And then we debate that as the Budget Committee, exactly the same way that we would debate it for the extension or for the Historical Society or for the Ski Club or for uh probation or any of those sorts of things. So it, I think we're okay there.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thanks. My thought on it is that to what some of you have already brought up. I want to see what the total budget is for the entire Kichigami Regional Library. And what are the other entities? Are, are there entities like Crow Wing that are getting a pass? I believe that they were paying their state minimum. What is their actual budget? How much is their spend? Are they getting increased and are they actually paying the increase? Those kinds of things, it should be equal amongst all members of the organization. Shouldn't be asked upon Beltrami County to pay a larger chunk of it than, than what is fair. And that's what I'd like to see.
So we could certainly put those together again. Um, your last board packet at all of the budgets that the board approved for distribution. Um, it, would you like me to speak to Crow Wing County at all? Okay, so uh, Crow Wing County's, the maintenance of effort was set as ninety percent of the twenty-eleven amount. It used to be based on a formula which calculated based upon uh population, take tax capacity, all of that. So in twenty-eleven, their minimum was set at five oh nine one twenty-seven. And no, we have not gotten them to pay a penny over. I've been trying. I'll keep trying, but yes. So um, dollar to dollar, they do pay a lot more. Um, I also think it's worth noting that the funds that you pay go to Beltrami County Libraries. Some of the parts of your budget support regional functions as far as delivering items to your libraries. Um, keeping your integrated library system, circulation system going. But these budgets are based on the costs of the libraries in your region. Most counties also see outreach costs as far as bookmobile service, but Beltrami County did not.
The question was about fairness of what counties are paying in relation to what their ability to pay and what their needs are. And so it sounds like throwing it, getting a pass again, and we're picking up the slack. And, and that's just not fair. I mean, they're, they're allowed to get by paying, yes, their state minimum is more, but they also have a heck of a lot more taxable property than we have. For the second forest county in the state, they should be, you know, paying the same percentage increases and stuff that we are. And that should be more equitable, not, not just the, you know, while they're, they're state, you know, holding their, holding their guns association. We're, we're having to pay extra.
What they don't pay is cut from their library and what you don't pay is cut from your library. So it's sort of a, a Beltrami County, Beltrami House, Beltrami Costs, and those are the costs for the, in your county. So it's not, your money does not go and pay for Crow Wing County.
They don't pay any increases, know nothing, year after year after year.
Um, generally, what we have seen with them is that uh, so Brainerd City also has a part in it because the city library is there. Um, so we do go to each of them for increases. Um, then Brainerd tends to do, oh, anywhere between two to five percent for us. Um, and Crow Wing County has not done increases. So what happens then is that their library services are actually cut. So it might be a matter of they have less materials, less hours or less staff. But our budgeting principles are that the total cost of the libraries in your county will be paid by the cities and the county. So it, it's sort of an inclusive bubble there. There's a little bit that goes out to the general as far as what we charge for delivery or technical services. But for the most part, the money you pay stays within your county in your libraries.
Mr. Chair.
Sure, happy to provide it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I don't know if this is uh fortuitous or why, but um, Emma Devera has actually just sent an email regarding the state minimum uh funding requirement literally eight minutes ago while we were having this conversation. So I, I, we didn't ask her to do it. It just happened to come. So the state sort of, just to answer the question, the state certified level of library or sport, support rather, required for Beltrami County for twenty twenty-three is two hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars. So that's uh, that's the minimum under the Minnesota Statute, Chapter one thirty-four point three four, that the county is obligated to pay.
Okay. So we continue this meeting, but we have a timeline, I believe, as a county, when we have to put together the budget and present it to the public. So, and you're well aware that.
Absolutely, yes.
So um, Joe, if you will wave the magic wand uh to kind of keep this going for us. Uh, I just don't want the ball to drop, nor do I want to have uh a number of disgruntled community people coming to the board meeting because they're not understanding when maybe some of us are not understanding, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, we very much welcome your feedback. I thank you so much for your time today and previously for allowing me to come and speak with you. Um, and we very much welcome your feedback on ways that we can improve and make this a viable budget for Beltrami County. So, thank you.
Appreciate your information.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay, let's move on to the Joint Airport Zoning Board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mike Carver with Carver Engineering, the airport consultant for the Bemidji Regional Airport. It's my understanding you have a resolution in front of you this evening to be approving a draft ordinance that we put together on customized zoning. I did bring a jumper out with maps. I don't know if you have them in your packet or if you want to.
Yeah, you want to, but we could show them.
Yeah, I think I would like to see.
Uh, maybe the next one. There's, there should be files on there. The next one, I can keep it really high level if you want to. To the minutia, we can do that as well.
Um, whichever is quicker.
No. Trust me, I'm not a long talk. Now, so why do we need zoning? So zoning in the state of Minnesota was enacted in the early nineteen seventies by all airports that were state-funded um throughout the state. So a lot of the communities have been operating underneath this zoning. So why do you need zoning? You don't want wind farms. You don't want towers. You don't want obstruction sitting off the departure and arrival surfaces of each airport. You want to control some of the development to make sure that it's not going to be a danger for planes and passengers operating in and out throughout the airport. So what you see here on the screen um would be what we currently have. And I'll clarify that it's not a DOT, Minnesota DOT Commissioner-approved zoning. Um, this was changed ad hoc back in the two thousand seven and eight um time period. The purple areas right off the end of the runway, the, the hatch area is what we're, we're going to refer to as Zone A. And the blue areas outside of there are going to be Zone B. Zone A traditionally is going to be a lot more restrictive in development, because if there's going to be unfortunately a plane accident, they have a statistical um, probability of where it's going to go. So it's going to be in that Zone A section. So not long ago, a few years ago, the state of Minnesota came through with a statute allowing airports to be going through a customized zoning process. In northern Minnesota, the, one of the most recent ones is the City of Duluth and their airport operations. Because every air, every community in their airport, the way it operates is not the same. So it just makes sense to take your customized zoning, uh, prepare it. So we went through twenty twenty-two and into this year with a JasBia Joint Airport Zoning Board, which the members are the City of Bemidji, the County Northern Township, Bemidji Township, Echoes Grant Valley and the City of Wilton. And why are they included? Because the zoning that's currently sitting in touches each of those local governmental units. So brought them to the board, created the JasBia, the Joint Airport Zoning Board, um, and presented, went through a bunch of stuff. How can we make this a less restrictive process moving forward? So there's no variances that are coming ahead and economics are not put in front of what safety should be for an airport. Um, so the next slide would show from a big picture. For the next picture, what we're looking at for the customized zoning, um, you can see it's not the traditional trapezoid on all four ends. Uh, we tried to follow more of the parcels. Yeah, we've had a number of meetings, three, four different meetings and went through each of these. Um, the representatives discussing what makes more sense. So what are we trying to do with the zoning? So the, the, the previous Zone A, again, the purple hatch day, we're going to call Zone One, just so we're not conflicting with the, the past stuff is. That's still protecting the airport. Again, the statistical accident propensity is going to happen in that, that Zone One. Zone Two, um, previously was limited to more, for example, maybe it's fifteen people per acre for development. Removed a lot of those restrictions and now it's going to be focusing more on the vulnerable populations like schools, churches, mass gathering type um, locations sitting in there to make sure what we're creating for that Zone Two is not going to prohibit any of the existing things and, and try to mitigate something moving into the future. So this is what we look right now. And if you want to flip to the next page, it'll start going into the individual zones. For example, this is on the southeast side, probably the most congested area of the zoning in the City of Bemidji. Um, I don't know how, how much you want to go, me to go into this. Um, so you can flip to the next one. We'll just go on.
Jim? So where, where, where does the county property lie within this uh zone?
So on, on this graphic, we're looking here right now, you have two county representatives sitting on that board.
I'm talking about the county land, the target site.
It goes around.
Okay, okay. All right. All right, thank you. I, I just kind of wondered because I know in the past, uh, you know, board conversations, uh, the board was told that, you know, we, you know, we can't use the site or, or, you know, some, some things like that. So I was just kind of, you know, making sure that, you know, if, if there's any future development there that, you know, we're not, you know, you know, uh, kind of shooting ourselves in the foot with this.
So I should clarify, looking at these graphics and what we're doing here today is a draft of what we're proposing. Once this goes through August and all the local governmental units, including yourselves, approve this resolution, it's going to go to the DOT Commissioner, which they have ninety days to review it. They could come back and say, for example, your blue area is not enough based on, and we would have to respond to that. So what we have here is what the JasBia Committee came up with. Um, and if they just rubber stamp and it's done, this is what we're going to be looking at graphically. So to your point, right now, the county land is not included sitting into that blue section.
Yep. Mr. Chair, that, part of the other reasoning behind some of these changes were so that we don't have a variance every time a business wants to open up, like the, the most recent one being the Pizza Ranch. This also carves out the, the, where the Pizza Ranch is and the properties in that general area that could be developed uh as well. So trying to make it such that that's kind of the whole, one of the points of doing the custom zoning is to, to make it just more streamlined. So that if it's in the area, it's probably not going to be something that's capable of being um, having a variance.
And the challenge we're overcoming, if you can envision on the southeast side, the City of Bemidji can go opposite that runway in Echoes Township. Two completely different development areas, um, sizes of acres, what is being intended for. So the challenge with the board was to put something that works for all four ends together. That's what I think we have sitting in, in Jordans. So we can keep flipping through on each end, just to show you what it looks like. You can keep going. That's just showing more graphics. It'll show like, for example, the churches, the nursing homes. So there'll be two graphics to each end, one more cleaned up. So you can flip to the, keep going. So this is up in Echoes Township. Again, they have two representatives sitting on the board, so discussions of what size acreage, um, what makes more sense.
But we did do a little give and take too, like that big purple rectangle there. That was a, a chunk of state land and we added that into the purple area. Um, so that is, that's actually adding more property into the protected zone. Um, and then, so we're not totally reducing everywhere. We're, we're, it's a give and take.
Yep. So if there's no questions on this one, we can keep going. Next slide. Next slide. So this is down in the southwest end in Grant Valley Township. Um, this one's a complicated one, just given the proximity of US two to the end of the runway. But this is what the 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 committee came up with that we're going to make the recommendation. Looks very similar from the blue side to what it is right now, the zone B, should be zone two. We can flip to the last one. And as we're getting there, one more point I wanted to make on zoning, why is it important? Because that's what the funding is tied to. If we don't have zoning and we don't keep up with the zoning requirements, the state of Minnesota. Um, has the option to be reducing or taking away some of the funding for the airport. This is on the northeast side. Uh. So there again, I think we probably added more of the purple shaded area up on the north side than what's there today. Um, so it's not traditional trapezoidal zone. This is very similar process again to what Duluth went through and it was accepted. So this is what we're going to be sending to the commissioner pending the approval of the ordinance or the resolution by all all parties. Any questions?
Questions? Looks like it was a complicated job, but it's, I'm glad uh, I'm glad we we've gone through it. I'm sure Karen's not going to miss all the variances maybe that come up.
You know, you know, when the community asks about zoning, you you tend to think it's going to be more restrictive, I think, going through this process. And with the JasBia, it is certainly a less restrictive type process, allowing more development options to be occurring in each end.
And I think it clarifies.
Correct.
You know.
Mister Chair, so uh you're coming to the board and then you'll be going to uh Echo's and Bemidji Township and.
So this is the only governmental unit we've been requested to present in front of. Each of them has the same resolution in front of them for approval this month. So once we gather all that, that's going to be submitted to the commissioner showing we have the support of all parties involved. This is what we recommend and then solicit their feedback.
Okay, so I was going to ask what the timeline of of submitting that to the uh commissioner would be.
September is what we're aiming for.
Okay.
And then later on this fall, once the commissioner comes back, assuming there's going to be no changes, then we open it up for public. Um, review of what we're doing. We can put some boards up and have the public come through and, you know, they can point to the individual parcel and see what it means. So we're hoping for full approval and moving forward in the first quarter of next year.
Um, I I just want to say thanks, Mike, for doing this. You didn't have to. So thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate you showing us the stuff. And and as far as to your point, Tim, uh, we get uh Echo's Township meeting tomorrow night on this and. And um, um, Grant Valley Township, I believe, is also tomorrow night. And then Bemidji Township, they're all presenting this information um themselves. And they said they were fine with presenting it themselves.
And I was glad to see that uh, you know, I looked at that and I saw four of my. Townships that was involved and I thought, how are they going to know about this? And so I was glad to hear that there was representatives from those.
Very good group, honestly. A lot of good communication, good discussion. I think it's a very good plan that they put forward.
Good attendance in the meetings and good participation, lots of good input from all the, you know, the two members showed up pretty much all the time from each. Each organization.
And the commissioner's offices have been involved via Zoom on each of these meetings. So they're up to speed on what we're presenting. It's not going to be.
Yeah, this isn't a blind side. They've already seen pretty much what we're what we're looking to present and and they're in agreement. They're um. Recognizing like this one where we added more to the to to both sides of it. Um, but we followed some property lines. So instead of having just a sliver of some of the properties. Um, which is kind of silly, we followed property lines to make it more usable.
Sure.
Any other questions? No, thank you.
Bye.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Thanks, Karen.
Okay, displaced residents of Pro uh Red Pine Estates. Sandy and Cory?
Thanks for the opportunity to come and speak with you today. Commissioner Gould, I would like to say thank you very much personally for all the time that you take. Um, I know housing is important to you as it is important to me. And so um, thank you for that support and that problem solving. Um, Commissioner Carlson, Commissioner Goswick, thank you for emails and my phone calls and and helping to problem solve with me. And this is such a complex situation. So uh the more people that we can um kind of get it to the table and. And um, talk about it, I really appreciate it very much. And I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you about this issue. Um, there's many moving parts, many different things are happening. This has been a health and safety concern. It's already put a strain on housing issues here in Bemidji and our housing stock. And there are many different kinds of subsidies. And that's kind of what I want to start with is that Red Pine is project based. And so the subsidies go with the apartment. And so when you come into that apartment, that's your subsidy. So when the apartment became unus- unusable and the building became unusable, those subsidies went away. So what HUD did, um, what the Housing and Urban Development said is. Okay, we're going to let the landlord take those subsidies and talk to another landlord. And let them use them as a pass. It's called a pass-through subsidy. And so that really helps us. What we don't want to have happen in Bemidji is lose HUD subsidies. We've already. Lost so many HUD subsidies that we don't want to do that. So that's kind of where we stand with preserving those forty-seven. The problem comes in with resident choice and kind of um things that happened at Red Pine. A lot of the tenants don't feel comfortable using that landlord anymore as a landlord. And so they're choosing not to use those um housing subsidies. And so we're looking at trying to find other subsidies for them. The other thing is we have a really low vacancy rate and rent is really high as it is everywhere. And so what's happening is it doesn't become affordable for tenants with the with housing subsidies. So Bell Tr- Bemidji H R A, BiCap, um Headwaters Regional Development Commission. Uh, my housing navigator at H R D C, GoL, Bell Trami County Health and Human Services. We've all been working pretty much day and night with these family, with these tenants to to get them housed. Last Thursday onsite, we had a meeting with HUD representatives, with Minnesota Housing. All of the service providers and legal services, and we all met with the tenants for kind of a resource meeting. And they had an opportunity to kind of talk. And then we had an opportunity, if people hadn't had a chance to reach out for resources. They had all the service providers there. So what's happened since since Red Pine shut down? Twenty-five out of the forty-seven have found housing. Ten of those forty-seven are staying with families. And thirteen are currently at hotels. We started out with twenty-two at hotels. And we've reduced that as we've um helped them find housing. Many people have had to leave town, which is certainly what we don't want to have happen for our community members, especially those. Um, of our most vulnerable population. We don't want to um have them leave town. So how is kind of all of this being paid for? Um, the Rally for Red Pine has paid for all of the storage units. We had to put everybody in storage units. That's um eighty dollars a month for forty tenants. Northwest Minnesota Foundation has provided thirty-five thousand for hotel stays. And United Way has paid for all of the meals through their generous donations. When you look at two meals a day for. Um, you know, twenty-seven people. So we estimate it's about twenty-five hundred dollars per day per resident. Um, the biggest thing is that hotels are just not effective in just not efficient way. And so we're working as hard as we can. Two reasons, one, it's so expensive and two, it's not home. And so we're looking really hard at um trying to get people out. But again, there is just really no available housing. The owner has paid for some hotel stays. What we would really like to do is we would like them to preserve that HUD subsidy for when people get into. Their housing and then uh instead of ten months, now they'll have eleven months. We don't want. Um, it it would take one week. Their subsidy is gone in one week as opposed to one month. Um, in in an apartment. So we're really trying to use HUD's dollars really um effectively and really um efficiently. So I'm going to have Cory speak and then we'll take, then we'll take questions.
So hello, Commissioners. Um, thank you for having me here today. I'm talking about Red Pine and just how difficult um housing has been to find. Um, for these folks. So I'm Cory Bushy. I'm a program officer with the Northwest Minnesota Foundation. Um, the work I do across the region um focuses on supporting housing development and ending homelessness. Um, I want to be here this afternoon to share with you the overwhelming support that has come from this community and philanthropy for the residents of the Red Pine Estates. Um, so of course, thank you, Sandy, for sharing the updated numbers of the residents needing housing. Um, the countless hours of work that has gone into keeping these households safe. And I want to share. Um, a bit more about the difficulty members of our communities have in locating housing. Um, with vacancy rates estimated to be lower than two percent, it's incredibly and increasingly difficult for. Individuals living in poverty to secure safe and dignified housing. I think a healthy vacancy rate for housing is probably between five and ten percent. Um, so it's it's very difficult. Um, this past year, the average time it took for a person who was unhoused to access safe housing in Bell Trami County was a hundred and fifty-two days. Out of the three hundred and seventy-three people who access services. Um, through one of our partners like BiCap or Northwest New Community Development Center, the Village of Polo. Any of the organizations that help people find housing. Um, three hundred and seventy-three people access services. Only seventy-two of those people were able to locate safe housing. So the people displaced from Red Pine Estates will take significant time to locate new and safe housing. And it's incredible to hear that they volunteers have been able to go from twenty-two folks in hotels down to thirteen and it's a short amount of time. Based on the numbers that Sandy has shared, philanthropic investment from the community has been over a hundred thousand dollars. This does not even begin to quantify if we wanted to put volunteer hours and just the cost of the work that everybody's doing to to help these folks. Um, of that, the Northwest Minnesota Foundation has invested thirty-five thousand dollars to cover the cost to keep displaced residents housed. Ten thousand of that was directed from a disaster relief fund, which was wonderful that we had that fund available to use. The other twenty-five percent was from program funding, which is dedicated to typically helping our agencies increase their capacities to prevent and end homelessness. So we don't see, you know, a hundred and fifty-two days to end homelessness. We're working on capacity building and and improving those numbers. So. The N M F made the difficult decision to repurpose those dollars. Um, and you know, we'll have to find other ways to replace that program dollars. Because if we weren't able to make that tough decision on July twenty-sixth, everyone was going to be exited from the hotel to homelessness. Um, I know that every individual has been displaced. Um, is is in a really hard spot. We know their elderly, you know, they're in poor health. And we know they're going to struggle to find housing. Um, and I, so I believe we have a public health emergency we continue to to work through. Um, I believe across Minnesota, residents with the exception of maybe Minneapolis, really depend on county. So we're helpless with this public health emergency. And we've been doing a great job with partnerships. Um, across all the nonprofits and county health and human services and try to make all this happen. And I just want to point out. Um, you know, how we got to this point, so many buildings closing and residents displaced and all of that. And the struggle we have for housing needs is a conversation we welcome and we'd love to keep having. Um, but today I'm just really focused on the path forward for these individuals who are in hotels and and don't have a a new safe place to sleep. So. Look forward to talking to and talking in the future about affordable housing and and needs. And I've been in conversation with Mister Gould about um. Being back and and talking about housing needs in counties. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Sure. Just wondering, Sandy or or Cory, any update on what the county or not the county, but the city has, you know. Uh, contributed or is going to contribute or anything like that? No. Oh, I mean, with their building inspector kind of. Doing this and that over the Fourth of July weekend and and stuff, I feel like they should be taking more ownership in it. And um ideally, you know, saying, hey, we'll we'll put up this much and you know, when we could match them or something. Um, you know, so we double the funds or something like that. I just a little disappointed that we haven't seen more help financially or otherwise coming from the city.
I I can understand that. I I'm not going to make a comment on responsibility or anything. But yeah, I but that's that's one of the things that, I mean, is a is a foundation working in housing and homelessness, you know, if if we can be any help. For those conversations or that planning or however it help in the future, um, we need to be a part of, you know, we we need to improve how we can respond as a community.
Mister Chair.
Uh, Tim.
So uh, thank you, Sandy and Cory, for coming to uh give an update. You know, I I think there's a. Uh, this is a pretty unique situation that, you know, maybe uh none of us are really expected. So um, you know, I want to uh, thank you for for the update. So a couple of questions I I have is is um. Who's overseeing, you know, this this situation? Uh, is there is there a lead uh agency or a lead person? Because I know when a few weeks ago, you know, uh, my my phone was ringing uh constantly, getting emails, things like that, you know, from. You know, a lot of folks in the community and and I didn't know who, you know, who was overseeing this and and who to to talk to, who to respond to. So I it's kind of, I directed a lot of my questions to to your administrator. So. Um, you know, just like over the uh last week, you know, I got a call to be uh. I was invited over to the Hotel Bemidji this past Sunday, you know, to to have a meal with the, you know, the residents. And so I mean, I'm I'm not too sure who who was who picked up the slack.
Well, unfortunately, that would be me.
Okay.
Um, the HUD, I had a conversation early, um, probably, it was on the weekend. So it was the Saturday. Um, I happened to have the cell phone number of of a person at HUD and called them. And so they came down to see myself and the owners. And just through our conversations, um, unfortunately, I've been through this before with Pinridge. Um, and had some experience. And so they did um ask to enter in a contract with H R D C. With me as the lead person, HUD, um, I work, I work with HUD very closely. We talk two or three times. A day and I'm also in in contact two or three times a day with the owner.
Okay. Um, and Mister Chair, um, you know, I uh. Uh, Commissioner Gould, um, Goswick asked one of my questions, uh, you know, inquiring about the city. You know, paying anything. And it's unfortunate that uh, uh, the ones that are kind of responsible for the inspections, you know, didn't point it up anything, you know. And and I know, I think we're we're past the 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 blame game and and who was responsible for for this and that. And it's. It's unfortunate that, you know, they they have come up short. Um, and and I'm I'm hoping that. Uh, they would be able to help out some in some way, you know, in the future uh financially, you know, it it's my understanding that. Excuse me, that the inspector uh resigned. So where where is the the money, you know, from his salary going? You know, I mean, that that could be used uh towards uh, you know, some some of these uh costs that that have been incurred uh for the Red Pine. So um. And maybe this, these next few questions are for for Tom or or the board, uh, and maybe Sandy, you can help out. Um. You know, does the county have a a rental ordinance? So I'm thinking about. Um, you know, outside the city limits, you know, if tenants have issues with landlords, who who do they contact? You know, I'm just trying to think about the future, you know, because I'm I'm sure this probably isn't going to be uh the last time something like this happens. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we kind of, you know, have our wheels um turning, thinking about, you know, the future. And uh, you know, I'm also curious, uh, what can the the uh county do to address, you know, the housing issue? Because, you know, the past, uh, you know. Uh, we we've been dealing with this housing shortage for for, you know, a number of years. Um, affordable housing. So I mean, it. If there is a a chance and opportunity, you know, maybe we can have, you know, some sort of uh future work me topic uh discussion, you know, this kind of. Lay this out on table and and, you know, try to figure, figure uh, figure this out. So. Uh, those my questions, comments. Thank you, Mister Chair.
I I guess, uh, Tim, when I'm hearing you speak now, the the latter part, I think. I guess, Tim, when I'm hearing you speak now, the latter part, I think it is a future topic. You know, we could put on in the future, but right now, you know, our plate gets full. But I also didn't hear mention Sandy that the county was involved as far as the department with helping these folks. But I know that
Well, it said Beltrami County Health and Human Services.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Because they, they really were
Absolutely.
Right there and ready to, to help. Sure. Just excuse, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I can, I can answer Commissioner Sumner. I have the honor of staffing the Beltrami H R A. And one of their missions is to build affordable housing and they do have quite a bit of land. And so we are now in the process of actually doing some master planning. And there is, we're, I think we're in a really good position right now in Beltrami County. Because I think we're perfectly situated. We have organizations that work together that have built really strong relationships. We have H R A who has development, a planner, a housing specialist. And now the county or the, the state is giving 1.3 billion dollars in housing. And I told our board I want it all. So we're, we're looking very closely at, we'll be applying for, for grants. We'll be applying for building, things like, it's just, it takes a while. It starts in, usually it's in July every year. So next July, we'll kind of be gearing up. But through the legislature, they added 16 housing supportive programs this year. And so we just kind of have to wait and see how the state, how they staff it, how they, they kind of roll that money out. So we will be looking really closely at that. But I would welcome Commissioner Gould sits on our, he's, he's your representative. But I would welcome any, any and all conversations about housing and about master planning and things like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. But this is important. My concern isn't so much about what we're going to do in the future. Right now we have a crisis of 13 people still in hotels. Is that what, 13?
13 people, yes.
Okay. My question is, if we later on today approve some money for that, where does that go? How do we, how do we know that? How do we get the best bang for our buck on that? So does it go to, do we direct it to H R D C to put it into a fund that then you pay the hotels? Do we pay it directly? I mean, those are all the questions that we're going to have to wrestle with this afternoon that are immediate concerns. I understand all the rest of it. We have to tackle that, but today we have to tackle the immediate need.
I would say that we have an expert sitting in the back of the room with Ann Lynn Seth that could, you know, direct us and kind of provide. Most of, we did take in some money, but otherwise we, that's typically not what we do at H R D C. We just kind of did it because it was an emergency. But United Way has really been the one that has kind of picked up and done that. But I think Ann would have a mechanism to probably do that. If you think about, I know that the ones that are left are probably going to, because we've captured now all of the housing that we can. But if you think about 25, we got 25 housed in about three weeks. It would tell me that if we had another three weeks, we should be able to get those 13, you know, two to three weeks, we should be able to get those 13 housed. Again, they're going to be, what little housing is left is now gone. And so we are unfortunately, we're looking at different alternatives out of, out of Beltrami County, which you just don't want to see happen. But we want safe, secure housing for everybody. So.
Mr. Chair. One request, you mentioned some, some numbers of 10 housing, people that were displaced. Can you, can you provide that and then email or some form?
You mean the 40, we started with 47 and
Yeah, you know, because it was kind of hard.
You mentioned I thought originally 25 out of 47, it found some form of housing, 10 of which were housed with families, 13 were in hotels, two were something else. What about the other 22? And so if you can just email us, we don't need to go over all the details right now, but if you could email us, you know, kind of a breakdown.
And then, and then maybe a month from now, you know, hopefully the remaining, maybe
Everybody's housed.
Yeah, and, and, you know, provide that updated a month or whenever, you know, I think that would be helpful.
The other job that I have is to keep track of all 47 people. I need to make sure I know where everybody's at, at any given time. That's also my responsibility. So.
Thank you. Which segues right into Ann's presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ann Lynn Seth, Director of Health and Human Services. I'm here to talk with you about the Prime West County Support Grant Initiative. We are revisiting this conversation. I was here on July 18th where we started the conversation. It was tabled and so there's some additional information I'd like to present regarding the Prime West County Support Grant. So Diane, I believe I have a PowerPoint. And probably there's a couple of pages with a lot of text on it and I will talk about that if it can't be viewed on the screens that you have in front of you. So we have $203,842 that Prime West has made available through this county support grant. I proposed four options that Health and Human Services was recommending in July when I came. One of those options, we found out after that meeting, isn't going to be a viable option. We had originally come forward requesting to extend some staffing around the M A unwinding or the M A eligibility determination process that we are going through now. It was determined by Prime West that that may be viewed as a conflict of interest. There was a number of counties that were requesting a similar staffing scenario around M A unwinding. So an email was sent out by Jim Prisvilla from Prime West, letting all the county directors know in the 24 counties that that's not something that would be supported through this grant initiative. So we removed that as a recommendation and we added two additional recommendations that I'm bringing forward now. So they are one-time funds, so we had to be cautious of the use of them. We have to consider that they be used for prevention, early intervention, healthcare program services, or activities used to improve the health and wellbeing of Prime West members, as well as the fact that they are one-time funds. So how we can best utilize those funds while meeting the parameters of the grant. Counties are able to designate the funds to themselves or to an organization to be used for the approved purposes. And the grant funds can be used from 23 to 25. So ultimately, we have some recommendations for this board to make decisions around. Once this board makes decisions around the recommendations, then I will be writing grant applications on each of the topic areas that we would like to receive grant funds for. That grant application requires a statement of need, a project description, timelines, measurements, a budget, and then a budget justification narrative outlining how the budget is supporting Prime West members specifically. So we do have to keep within those parameters. One additional parameter, which is that we cannot use the grant for county projects or expenses that are already paid for through other funding. So the five record, the, yeah, five recommendations that I'm bringing forward today. I have spoken with Prime West about and gotten preliminary approval. I do have to still complete those grant applications once the county board makes decisions. But the five I'm bringing forward, Prime West just said, yes, they meet the parameters of the, the grant initiative. So the first suggestion from Health and Human Services is to use the funding around guardianship costs. I mentioned at the last meeting, we've seen these increase exponentially in the last few years. We've seen our adult mental health caseloads increase, our vulnerable adult caseloads increase. And due to that, we've seen the need for guardianship increase as well. So this would allow for us to provide guardianship to an additional seven to 10 Prime West members for the cost of $33,679. So there is a formula that I use to come up with that, that would be outlined in the grant contract. The second way that we would like to use the, the funds is for technology. Health and Human Services has gone through a very robust exploration of our electronic document management system. And we will be moving forward a request through the budget committee to do an update to our E D M S system. Ours is very outdated, it is degrading, and we do need to update that. While there is a significant cost to do that, we have found a number of ways to reduce that cost. And we are requesting much lower costs than the total package. This amount that is in section number two is the total cost that is justifiable for Prime West members. And I shared that formula when I met with you in July, total cost of the technology divided by staff and then multiplied by the number of staff that focus their time 82, 100% on Prime West members. So that would actually reduce our, it's an ARPA funding request in our budget process. The third request is for Red Pine or a recommendation is, is to support the residents of Red Pine. You heard from Sandy and Corey. This is a group of people who are in a unsecure at this point housing situation. And we are hoping to, like Sandy said, help them to find permanent housing in the next three weeks, month, however long it takes. But at this point in time, we need funds to continue to house them. We do see these people without a roof over their head. So we are looking at for $48,500. Now, at the time that I did this PowerPoint, that would have supported four weeks of housing. We've reduced the number of people in the hotel since that time. It would now support five weeks of housing and I do, I expect that to continue. So it probably would provide additional weeks of housing as we house different people and have them move out of the hotel, if that makes sense. We can also use the funds for storage fees if that funding source runs out that is currently being used. We can use it for moving expenses for this group. So we really, I, I believe this $48,500 would significantly assist the residents to remain in the hotel until we can secure permanent housing for them. The fourth recommendation is one of the new, the additions since I met with you last. We are requesting to have funding for the Nameless Coalition be funded by this Prime West County Initiative Grant. So we had come to the board in February, March, and Reed Olson had come and said that he was requesting some funds outside of the contract that we currently have. So the county board agreed on 10,000 in 2023 and 20,000 in 2024 and to put that 20,000 into our 2024 budget. Well, in order to do that, we have to reduce services. We would put that into our Adult Mental Health Initiative Grant. And that would reduce services that we provide for out of that grant. This would be a way to pay for that $20,000 for the Nameless Coalition without reducing services through our Adult Mental Health Initiative Fund. And it is justifiable for Prime West members and the fact that many people who utilize the services of the Nameless Coalition do come off and on medical assistance when they have healthcare needs. The percentage of them that end up being Prime West is about two thirds. So a lot of times these are Prime West members that are utilizing these services. The fifth and final request, which is also an addition since we met last, is to assist with funding our second floor remodel project, which is also a project that's moving forward through our budget committee, requesting the use of ARPA funds. We are requesting $38,753 out of this Prime West County Initiative Grant to help us support that second floor remodel. This is basically the remainder left in the county initiative grant. It is also less than 10% of the total cost of the second floor remodel. The second floor serves all Health and Human Service clients, customers, members. So the fact that it's less than 10% of the total cost is very justifiable as it would be serving many more than that in Prime West members. So that second floor remodel, we had talked with the board briefly about this at the end of 2022. But we had initially hoped to fund this out of some of our, our, our public health ARPA dollars that didn't end up happening. So now we're moving it forward through the budget committee and this would help reduce the asked amount from the ARPA dollars. There are some other options. One of them, we took two of the other options and we put them in our recommendations after we removed the request to extend staffing. So we have five left. One is to add a managed care lead worker. That is something that has a significant cost. So if we did do that, we would have to adjust some of the other asks for the fund. This is also something that there are some concerns around because if we add staff, that means we do need to have ongoing funding and put that into our ongoing internal budget. Managed care lead worker can bill for approximately 50% of their time. So the other 50% of their time for the next two years could be paid for out of this grant. But after that, we would have to put it into our budget. It is something that would very much benefit our managed care team. But at this point, this is an option for the use of the money, but like we said, we're recommending the other five. We could spend additional dollars on housing locator services. You've heard about the challenges of housing. We currently contract with BiCap. We provide housing locator services for our adult mental health clients. We could add on to that contract with these funds to serve specifically Prime West members. If BiCap was interested and had the resources to do so, so that's another option. We could purchase a new county vehicle for our managed care staff to use. We do have a vehicle fleet. At times we are out of vehicles and we also have vehicles that due to the fact that we need four wheel or all wheel drive. Sometimes they're a little bit higher off the ground and hard to get in. We could look at purchasing a car that would help to serve our managed care case managers and helping people get around. It's a little bit easier to get into a car than a vehicle that's up higher. So we considered that. And then we talked about cultural signage and also smudging packets that we could purchase out of these funds. So there's some other options, but again, the recommendations are the ones that I outlined in the PowerPoint and talked about. So I am happy to take questions, Commissioners.
Questions.
No, Mr. Chair, and thanks for, for the updated information. I know a few weeks ago, you know, we were kind of having discussions about, you know, whether to approve, you know, this, this or that. And, you know, I'm kind of, I know we were facing a situation with the Red Pine, you know, and, and understand that, you know, they need assistance and they need it now. But I think, you know, kind of pumping the brakes on this request, you know, gave us an opportunity to, you know, maybe look at, look at, you know, other options. And hearing and seeing that, you know, that you may be saving, you know, approximately $100,000 in ARPA funds is, is great, you know. So that would give us an ability to, you know, utilize those dollars in, in other ways. So so in a sense, it was a good thing and in a way it was not a good thing. But, you know, I do like the options that you, you presented today. Thank you.
I as well look at the options that you've put first. I think that's probably, you can see from your vantage point of working with this every day, you're the boots in the ground. You see where we can, maybe we can get some from another grant or we can get some from ARPA, whatever. But in reality, from my position, I have a hard, I have to rely and call you and say, what do you think, Ann? And I know with the folks from Red Pine that that is 70% of those people receive Prime West help. So it just makes sense that that would be in there. Anyone else?
Just a comment, appreciate all the time and homework and, and figuring out, you know, tweaking it from last meeting, definitely would support, you know, the, the five options, the first five options presented, not super crazy about the other options, but, you know, it's all really good stuff. It's an emergency situation. It's, it's not easy. I know you've been putting in a lot of extra time and efforts and I want to thank you for that.
Mr. Chair, I just, thanks Ann for responding to emails, corresponding, getting me additional information and for going through and showing us here what other options we have. And like you're gonna, you know, as Commissioner Sumner mentioned, I think, you know, was probably good that we didn't act on it last time because we found out that that first option from the last time wasn't fully viable. And I think we were measuring twice and cutting once here. So I like that. And I just hope that if, you know, if we do go ahead and, and go with this, this, as you have it laid out, which I do like, I'd just like to challenge the city to at least match us with the money that we would be putting forth. So hope they're listening. So you might have an insight on that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Anne.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Appreciate it. Okay, now we have the updated personnel rules. And I see Linda's coming, but I thought maybe Anne was going to do this, Linda.
Good evening. I thought I'd give her a little bit of a chance to get her feet wet before putting her on the board here on this one. So we came before the board a month and a half, two months ago, I'm talking about the drug free chat, the drug test, drug policy that we have at the county. And with the passing of the new cannabis laws that took effect today, we had to update our policies to accommodate that. And one of the big part of, one of the big parts of that was the word drugs was redefined in the law and it took out marijuana, the cannabis flowers, the cannabis products, the hemp edibles and hemp dried products. So we had to make that change in our policies as well to be able to match that. So when the policy changes that you see before you, you see a lot of the word cannabis in there and that's just to define that out because it is no longer included in the word drug as it is now separated. As part of it, the other part of the, big part of the drug policy that we had to do is identifying which positions will now be subject to cannabis testing in the pre-employment testing world. And there were seven, what we call, the Minnesota Safety Council put on some quick training on this because we were all trying to figure out the definitions and what fell into these different areas. And they call them the seven lucky positions was what their training manual went by. And a safety sensitive position is one of them, peace officers, firefighters, on positions requiring face-to-face care, training, education, supervision, counseling, consultation, or medical assistance to children, vulnerable adults, or medical psychiatric or mental health patients, a position requiring a commercial driver's license, a position of employment funded by federal grant, or any other position in which the state or federal law requires testing of a job applicant for or an employee for cannabis. So taking those definitions and using the information from the trainings, we went through and graded all of our positions. And that's the attachment, this got attendance A that we attached, we identified which positions would be subject to which testing. Of course, they gave us some guidance as to what positions would be considered safety sensitive, such as working in the jail, I'm working around equipment where other people or the people could be harmed, such as forklifts, equipment that where you're operating that around other people. And we applied those rules to our job descriptions and came up with the listing that you have. A lot of this will be tested in the courts as things go forward because there is no there's there's no previous experience on this. So we're taking the best advice that we have and applying those. And then we'll apply this to our pre-employment drug testing policy. Starting, I didn't test anybody today, starting tomorrow. Make sure that we're following the rules for these, this new testing. So I'm asking for any questions or and then the other, I guess, one more thing that we did do. We also looked at the DOT testing. So in addition to our drug testing policy, we also have our DOT testing policy, which covers our highway and our solid waste employees. And our policy was listed as the Highway Department. And we are now the Public Works Department and encompass both of them. So we took the time to be able to update that policy as well to make it clear that we're including the CDL drivers at both solid waste and the Highway Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Linda, when you, when you went through all that, did you have, well, I mean, did you have Sheriff's Department sit in, Brent's Department and Bruce's Department? And then the unions, do they get involved? Was it, I mean, is that a thing too? I mean, I don't know. I'm just curious.
Well, it it is part of the personnel rules and we took it to the management team meeting, the management team to review with them and then I spoke. And, you know, the different departments, yes, all reviewed, talking to Bruce. I mean, the highway labor is one that I've kind of like, okay, well, what highway labor, they're not operating equipment, but they're standing in the middle of the road with a stop sign controlling traffic in high traffic zones. So with Bruce, we said, yes, this is an important thing that we don't want somebody to be under the influence in those situations and included those. Again, this is, there isn't a list that says these are in and these are out. It is subject to interpretation and it'll be subject to lawsuits in the future, unfortunately.
Thanks. Thanks for trying to get work through all this stuff and short, short notice and and when you get one foot out the door too, so we appreciate your help, but I'm just, I have just wondering about Linda, I'm wondering about the, just the stuff that the people, it looked like the verbiage was pretty broad and and that if somebody is getting something from, you know, a local store off the shelf that has like a, for pain relief, that's a CBD thing, is that covered under this too, where they can't use that type of stuff either? Employees that might have a back issue or something, get a roll-on CBD thing? Is that part of this too? Does that have stuff in it that is not good?
Well, I could kind of relate that back to, is three-two beer okay?
Oh, okay. I don't know anything about any of this stuff. But I'm just wondering, wondering, because you see it on the store shelves and and that, but you know, I don't think there's any restriction for wasn't, prior to today, was any restriction for buying it. And so I didn't know if it was, if that was okay or not.
So our drug free policy says that you cannot use drugs or alcohol or now cannabis in, and cannabis used to be included under drugs. So you can't use that while you're working.
And CBD, CBD isn't included in that?
The non-hemp. I'm not an expert on this either, but some of the, some of the CBDs that were being sold do in fact have the THC in it and was would test positive for
That's, that's what I was wondering, if it doesn't have the THC in it, if it's just, you know, regular CBD stuff or something that, then it doesn't, or maybe all of it has some in it, I don't know, but.
We'll find out.
So you can't bring it to work, distribute it, use it at work during work hours, just like you can't bring beer or whiskey or any other alcohol or any other drugs, even though beer is legal, you still can't bring it to work and drink it.
So it's pretty much a zero, if it has anything to do with it, it's not possible for him. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. I apologize about my dress. The rain decided that for me when I got caught in the monsoon this morning, so. Pretty, pretty tough. Anyway, usually when I come and ask, I actually don't even attend a board meeting, it is just approved and signed. But the history of our vendor, we have had Summit, it used to be Aviance since two thousand and four. We even had the same supervisor cook since two thousand and four, and she just retired last, this last February. So they've been a very stable company ever since we have been with them. However, in the past two to three years, due to inflation, their contract and prices have risen and of course, with the events that have played out in our nation and I hate to say it, across the world, inflation costs with labor costs have increased by seven, seven percent across the nation. Raw food costs have spiked twenty-four percent just last year and this year again in fourteen percent. So with our also limited use permit, our population has risen or has decreased, but then their employee expenses have stayed the same because we still need the same amount of persons to operate and it's basically on hours. They'll come in to work at approximately that six-thirty, seven o'clock range and they leave by about four-thirty, five-thirty range. So depending on the days. So basically, my question is, are we able to sign the amendment for this year's food service agreement? And I guess another, obviously, I put that in the packet of, we will be looking at other other vendors next year, but due to the timing, we're not able to renew it unless it's ninety days prior to our contract. And our contract date would be June first next year of twenty twenty-four. I have it already on my calendar for this December to make sure I get updated quotes and hopefully some better pricing from these other groups.
Questions, comments?
There was a, is that a typo or was that when we originally started with them? It says effective June first, two thousand and four?
That's correct. That was the very first time we signed a contract with, and they used to be Aviance, but now they've changed to Summit.
Was Aviance. And pricing wise right now, what they're proposing, how far, I mean, comparatively, how many meals a day are we looking at right now and?
So approximation, you're at that, if you see on the amendment, it's, we're running that sixty-five to eighty. So each tray is four dollars and one cent.
Personally, I don't see any, any question here, you know, with what you talked about and with their history. Personally, I would say yes, we have that right to do that. And and I, I guess it's on our, our consent agenda. And I'm kind of looking for any indication here, nods or anything.
Oh, Mr. Chair. You know, so it's my understanding that you're asking to for the board to approve a point for increase to for the contract with Summit?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, you know, I, I know that the cost of goods are going up, so I would imagine that that having an increase like this would probably happen, you know, eventually. But with that, you know, I, you know, I guess for full disclosure, I have been contacted by an inmate through text and, you know, inquiring about, you know, calories and and whatnot. And I, I don't know if others have been contacted, but I did tell this individual to contact Mr. Barry so that we all have the same information. So just want to let Kalenda know and the rest of the board. So I'm hoping that, you know, with with this contract that, you know, maybe that there are some, something in here that that states, you know, that they are meeting the required daily calories or you, I'm no expert in in this, but you know, just want to bring that to to the board's attention as well and I see no issue in supporting this on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Kalenda. Administrators update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a brief update for you this afternoon. I wanted to thank each of you for attending the Employee Appreciation Celebration we held on July twentieth, the last week, between three and four-thirty with the fish fry. We had music and games, a good showing from the staff. So we have really good feedback again and appreciated your support. Not only be by being there and participating, but certainly with the resolution that you passed earlier this year to allow that kind of thing to to occur for our organization. Wanted also briefly update you on the fiscal year twenty-four budget. We have gone through the line items and the capital budgets, the enhancements. Staff have done a very good job pulling all of that information and we've combed through all of that. And initially, we we identified that the needs of the county with initial requests not including enhancements was hovering around an impact of seventeen percent to the levy. So obviously, we had a lot of work to do to try to drive that number down as far as we could. We've tried to do that through a number of different means, including myself having several meetings with key department heads, trying to take a deeper dive into the budget, figure out where we might be able to find opportunities, savings, synergies, identify over budgeting trends or those sorts of things. In addition, we have gone through our entire management team's review and presentation of the budget. Found some additional changes and whatnot. So I'm pleased to report at the moment that the Budget Committee's work will be a little easier than a a review of levy of seventeen percent. We're down to about seven percent right now. And of course, there are several enhancements. We have about two-point-seven million dollars of enhancements that have been requested in addition. So we have ideas for the Budget Committee and I think we have some strategies and things to kind of talk through. Which is why, again, you know, when we have big increases that push our budget higher that we can't control or maybe have some influence over, like we talked earlier about the library budget or those types of things. It's important to kind of just be in the same page about, you know, where you want to see the budget, what you want to see the number as. Probably the biggest driver in budget right now, actually definitely the biggest driver is labor costs. And, you know, anytime there's a cost of living increase, that cost of living increase is almost, almost a one-for-one transfer directly into the, into the increase across the board. And of course, we must remain competitive. I will tell you that we are still very concerned about our turnover rates. Last year, we replaced eighty-seven, was it eighty-one or eighty-seven? It's somewhere, it's either eighty-one or eighty-seven staff members last year alone. That's a turnover rate of north of twenty percent, which means that every five years, the entire workforce is being turned over. That's very costly. So we're concerned about that. And I've talked a little bit about this with our new HR director. And so we're going to be rolling up our sleeves and looking at other ways that we can tackle that particular issue. But cost of living increases are an important consideration because they remain, that allows the county to remain competitive, or at least as close to competitive as we can going forward. So so that's, that's going to be a tough one to kind of navigate through because there is a number of uncontrollable costs that are driving the budget. Just want to let you know that the Budget Committee is planning to meet Monday, August fourteenth, nine-thirty to four-thirty. August fifteenth, nine-thirty to one, and August fourteenth, one o'clock to four-thirty. And we hope that that will do it in regards to getting us to a recommendation for the broader board to consider. And we will plan to present the preliminary budget and the preliminary levy to you at the September fifth board meeting. You'll have two weeks from that particular time to evaluate the budget, ask questions, meet with department heads or myself, make changes, recommendations, or any of that kind of stuff. And our schedule is such that we do hope that after that two weeks has expired on the second meeting of September, the board meeting, you'll be able to make your recommendation. Next, I'll move on to the jail project. Wanted to let you know some really good news. I think I sent this to you in an email already, but maybe for the public. We were invited to be included on the state bonding bill tour. That's really good news for us. We still have a long way to go before we find out if we're really going to be seriously considered for the bonding bill this next time around. To remind you, I did make a request of fifty million dollars of the state of Minnesota to participate in our jail project. I made that same request of the federal government on three separate occasions as well. Those aren't going very well. But the state's news is good news. And so I wanted to let you know that this tour with legislators and staff will occur on August the seventh at ten AM. And so we'll need to work together on, we have a one-hour opportunity to give a tour, make a presentation and otherwise educate the the team about the project. Additionally, we are, we have developed a communications committee to discuss how to educate the public on the local option sales tax vote that's going to be placed on the November ballot this year. We've had several meetings already. We have two more additional meetings this week. And there's a lot going into this conversation. And, you know, we we cannot campaign as a county or as any representatives of the county in regards to the local option sales tax, you know, encouraging people to vote one way or the other. So we have to be really careful to make sure that we are very clear about just expressing the facts on this particular issue. And and so we're, we're working on those messages and and we are, we're trying to get those messages out. Really, voting starts on September the twenty-second, so this actually is, you know, pretty important issue to be working on now. Some people like to think, well, it's not, the vote's not till November, but actually voting starts September twenty-second, so that's important. And so with that, I'll stand for any questions. That's all I have for you in regards to an update for this afternoon.
Questions?
Mr. Chair. Thanks for the update, Tom. So it's good to hear that the seventeen percent proposed levy went down to seven percent. So it's good to hear that the seventeen percent proposed levy went down to seven percent. I might have an idea on how to further decrease it.
We're all ears, Commissioner Sumner.
Can you remind me who was on the budget committee this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The two new folks, that's going to be kind of interesting this year, I think.
Yeah. And I believe the Fall Policy Conference registration is now open for AMC.
I believe that's true, but I haven't seen anything come across my email just yet, but it's about that time, yes.
Okay, I know there was one thing, right? I did, I forgot to write it down, so.
You'll think.
Yeah, I'll think of it.
Okay, anything else? All right, let's take a break until the five o'clock meeting.
We're going to call this meeting to order and we'll have a quiet place. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Hey, I have no. The board doesn't have any comments tonight. Glad to see people here. And I'd like to say anyone wishing to address the county board item not on the agenda and come forward at this time to be recognized by the board chair. Please state your name and address for the record. Comments are limited to five minutes. A personnel complaint against an individual county employee may not be heard initially at a board meeting. Personnel complaint may be submitted to the board in writing to the county administrator's office. A person addressing the board may not use the proper language. And we try to keep the comments to five minutes. So is there anyone that would like to?
Is there anyone that would like to address the county board with concerns or comments?
That are not on the agenda.
That are not on the agenda, correct? Just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Cindy Tessa. My address is forty-five oh nine Birchmont Drive, northeast here in Bemidji. I just want to thank you guys for addressing the concerns with Red Pine. And I just ask for your guys' support in helping us help some of our displaced tenants. None of this was their fault and they're suffering consequences. I'm just here to ask for your guys' help.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the agenda as written.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll segment.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. All right, now I would like to request a motion to open a public, the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. I'd like to start the hearing with staff comments or a presentation that has to deal with the public hearing.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lori Clark. I'm Recreation Resource Manager, the Natural Resource Department. And today, we're asking for some proposed amendments to our ordinance forty-seven, which was passed back in July twenty-seventeen. And just kind of a little bit of background, in May this year, we, we met with Commissioner Anderson, Sheriff Riggs, and a couple of user group members of the Grant Creek Horse Camp to kind of address some issues that they've been having with ATVs, other recreational vehicles. And we've kind of came to a consensus at that point that we would move ahead with potential proposed change to the ordinance to prohibit those kind of vehicles in Grant Creek Horse Camp. It's a safety issues for the horses, for the campers. And like I said, it was agreed upon by all to move ahead with this. It also allows law enforcement to be able to actually enforce removing any ATVs, et cetera, from the area. And Grant Creek Horse Camp, it's a, it's an eight acre area with less than point two five miles of trails or roads in it. You know, it's kind of also talked about that if people need to use the bathroom out there, or they could park down at the end, or they could walk up there. It's, I think, less than a two hundred, two hundred foot walk up to that area. But it was also, I mean, we've had increased issues with, with ATVs going through there, spooking horses. And we just don't want anybody getting hurt out there. The second portion of the changes was to incorporate the Wilton Hill Recreation Area rules into the ordinance. We passed that back in July of twenty-twenty-one with just kind of a list of rules. But now we want to actually incorporate that into the ordinance as well. So it's in there and it's enforceable. And that's kind of where you see the proposed changes. You know, we're adding the language of Wilton Hill Recreation. The rest of the rules were already somewhat incorporated in there, except for that target shooting one. So that's why you actually see a separate area that talks about the target shooting in Wilton Hill Recreation Area. So those are proposed changes. The majority of it is just, like I said, to prohibit those recreational vehicles in Grant Creek Horse Camp. And the second portion is to add the existing rules into that ordinance for Wilton Hill Recreation Area.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, now I'd like to ask the public, anyone that would like to make your comment on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone that would like to state any opinion on this?
Mr. Chair, do we need a motion to approve this amendment?
Uh, I would, we'll do that, we'll need to do that later.
Okay, so, uh, maybe if you can help me understand, this is just a public hearing? Are we gonna have an additional public hearing or?
No, this is the public hearing on this.
Okay, okay.
Hello, Lynn.
Hello. My name is Lynn Schroeder Martin. I live at four-eight-eight Spike Lane Southeast, Bemidji, Minnesota. Um, I am really glad to hear that there's a consensus to get the ATVs not in the camp anymore. Um, being an avid horse person that I am, and because I started this project, I'm the one that's the reason the camp's there. Um, I started back in two thousand and seven with working with the county to do this. And um, there's, we talk about the amount of money the county has put into this project, but there's not a lot about what the people with the equestrians have put into this. So um, there's a formula, there's a national group called the Backed Up Horsemen, and they're a national group for trails and camps. Anyway, I got their formulary for labor, use of our bobcats, use of this and stuff, what I kept track of. Because there's a lot of stuff that happened I didn't think to keep track of. And I came up with over seventy-eight thousand dollars that we've gotten in money. And it wasn't tax dollars either, so it was from us. Um, I don't know what else to tell you. And it's just nice to have a place where we can go be safe. I can bring my grandkids and not have to worry about a four-wheeler going by and having a horse step on them. It's just, you know, they're good animals, but there's that they're a flight animal and they can hurt people. And it's become a real big deal in other areas about the liability. Um, so the camp is a county park. So you have your liability part, but for me, the civil suit, if somebody got hurt, a child got hurt because parent wasn't watching them or something. So it's really good to move forward with no ATVs and that sort of thing in the camp for the better of all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else wish to speak? And anything else that the department would like to share? Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I just want to follow up on Commissioner Sumner's question because I still don't know if I have the right answer to that. Is that an action for another board meeting? Are we, or where are we at with that process?
I'm, I'm looking over at Tom because.
When we close the public hearing tonight, are we turning around and then voting on the same issue or for another?
As I understand it, we do have the right to take action on it if we wish.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. Once you close the public hearing, then you'll entertain a motion. And if your motion is to approve or approve with amendments or any of those kinds of things, you are free to do that. You're also free to extend the public hearing if you felt like you wanted to do that. Uh, you can talk before you make an official motion about what you've heard, ask clarifying questions of staff, any of those sorts of things. But you are free to make a motion to approve tonight if that's what you so desire.
Okay. Uh, we have another person to speak.
Hi, I'm Crystal Schröder, three oh six two eight U S Highway two of Boston, Minnesota. We camp out at the Grant Creek Horse Camp quite often. I've talked to a few of you on the phone. Um, we've had a lot of incidents with four-wheelers having trouble with them, with our horses. Um, there's like one incident, I mean, they get mad at us just because they're, you know, it's like, it's just kind of scary. It's dangerous when you've got like a new horse you're training and you try to go into camp and they're fine on the trail because we can hear them coming, we can get off, prepare. But when they just come flying into camp, it's just way too dangerous. And like, I don't mind people walking in, using the restroom or anything like that. It's just the fact of the, the safety of it in the camp itself. So, thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, uh, then if there isn't, I'm gonna request a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Uh, all of, oh, a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now at this point, we can.
Mr. Chair, yes, I would recommend that, I, I'm generally in favor of this. I think it's probably a good idea, but I would like to have one more meeting that gives two weeks in between, just in case there's somebody else that wasn't aware of anything until tonight that they could maybe either call us or whatever, and then we could put it on the August fifteenth agenda. In fact, as far as I'm concerned, it could be on the consent agenda. I I'm generally in favor, so, but, but I would like to have that option of that two-week buffer.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, there's two options that are available to the board if they'd like to take Commissioner Carlson's suggestion. The first is to uh, keep the hearing open. You've already closed it.
Yeah.
Uh, so you could reopen it and keep it open for that two-week period. And then if you got comments or anything during that two weeks, they would be added to the record and you could take that information. Alternatively, you could keep the hearing closed as you've just closed it and then have a second hearing in and of itself and restrict the comments that you would receive to just that time again, just like you've done this evening. So those are your kind of two options, not to confuse the matter, but to give you some flexibility in regards to how you'd like to move forward.
I think since we've already closed it, we, we could just leave it closed and open it again because then there's not going to be those that might call me and I forget to say something to whomever.
So, Mr. Chair, if that's your, the will of the board, then we would recommend that you agree to hold a second public hearing and vote on that. And then that will authorize the staff to then publish the notice for the public hearing and make sure that everything's on the up and up for the next meeting.
I would just soon do that.
Yeah. Okay, very good.
Yeah.
There, you're making a motion? Do we need a motion?
For the second hearing, yeah.
Okay, so, so.
To set a date.
I think that we have a second hearing.
All right.
At the, at the August fifteenth.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I guess looking over to, to Dick, has, has anybody called the office and expressed anything in favor or opposition?
You gotta make sure all these are working. It's kind of hard to hear everywhere. No, no one has called at all on that. And just one thing I would like to mention is, as far as the Wilton Hills Recreation Area, we do have some photos that we could probably show next time. We could show them tonight, but you already closed the meeting of just all the litter and garbage and, and things that are accumulating out there from, from people using it nefariously, so.
Okay.
It's, it's been quiet.
All right, anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I'll, I'm generally in favor of this. Uh, I would like to see us just approve it tonight. You know, tonight is the meeting. People had a chance to show up. If they're not here, they're not here. This has been advertised. All the stakeholders have known this meeting is coming. Um, I haven't received any information for or against, I know. But I trust the staff and the stakeholders have went above and beyond. I'm happy to approve this tonight, but that, that's my discussion here.
Okay, anyone else? Motion's been made and seconded, right?
Right.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So then we will have, uh, it on the agenda again for next, in two weeks. All right. Let's move on to our next item, which would be uh, Prime West County Support Grant Initiative.
So, Mr. Chair, I think we could just move right into making a motion, and then if there's questions, we can talk about it. But I'd like to move that we accept Anne's first five proposals that she talked about, that she outlined in the work session. I thought those all sounded pretty reasonable. Now, having said that, it was my intention to maybe want to do something with that forty-eight thousand five hundred for Red Pine and try to leverage that with the city of Bemidji, seeing as how they haven't done anything yet. But I also recognize that they may never do anything, and it's of utmost importance that we do something for the Red Pine residents. And so with that, I would make that motion that we accept Anne's first five recommendations as outlined in a work session for the grant money from Prime West.
I'll second. Okay, that's our discussion.
I would just parrot what Commissioner Carlson just said, and I would really hope that the city is listening and that they would also would come up to, to help out with some kind of financial support, minimally. Ideally, it'd be a match one-to-one with what we're doing, but any, anything at this point would be appreciated.
Mr. Chair and maybe Anne or Tom. Um, let's say some, some thing, some. Is, is there a way to recoup this, you know, or, or is this something that we just kind of do because it's what we do?
I don't know of a way to recoup it at this time, but if there is an opportunity to recoup it in the future, I will certainly pursue that.
So can we send the city a bill?
All right.
Here, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. I hope we didn't, uh, uh, make it tough for you. I know you were prepared for a half-hour speech, but, all right.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, just a quick question. Is there, is there anything that we have to do with regards directing, how the money gets directed, or is that they just be handled by Tom and Anne and?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
We can handle that administratively. Thank you.
Just for your information, Commissioners, the United Way is happy to manage the Red Pine funds for us. They are already managing those funds that are coming in and they're collecting receipts and have a tracking methodology. They're willing to do that.
Mr. Chair, thanks, Anne, for, for that because that's kind of what I was trying to ask Sandy. But I didn't know, maybe the, maybe it came out wrong, you know, because I mean, I seen that there was a lot of financial donations and things like that, and I was kind of wondering, well, who was responsible for, for managing, you know, those funds and who would these funds go to and, and things like that? So I mean, I know that there's a, a lot of moving parts.
Yep.
And there's, and there's, you know, lots of people that, that deserve, you know, the, the acknowledgement and kudos and and so I won't even attempt to, you know, to begin, but you know, I just want to make sure that everybody is, is recognized. So thanks, Anne.
Yep, the United Way is willing to manage it for the housing costs, the relocation costs and the storage costs, which is what we discussed during the work session. And if there's any remaining funds, they will return that to us and I will let the board know and we can discuss what to do with those.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Anne.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Can we, uh, are we at a juncture where we can update the personnel rules that Linda has explained to us in a work session? Is there a motion? Do we have a discussion afterward?
I'll move that we approve the, the stuff that had presented regarding the new personnel rules for the addition of the specific specificity on the cannabis.
Okay, second?
Second.
Discussion? Jim?
I'm just waiting for, for the vote.
I'm watching him as he gets his mic ready. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
He beat you with that other guy.
So there's drug testing tomorrow then?
Keep it clean, State Fair advertising. Hello, Brent.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, I'm coming tonight to ask for, uh, it's kind of two things, but it's one agenda item. It's, uh, one is support, general support, acknowledgement of the Keep It Clean campaign, um, which you've kind of already done in a way. About a year ago, Robin Dwight from the Upper Red Lake Area Association came and presented information. She was asking for a letter of support to, um, to, for some legislation. Um, I'm just kind of more of a generic support for Keep It Clean, and if you do support it, I'm asking for, um, the ability to take five hundred dollars from a line item in my current budget in two thousand and twenty-three and just move it to a, a different line item in my budget and authorize me to spend it on apparel. The backstory is, we're going to the State Fair this year as a staff, um, from the SWCD grant we received for Keep It Clean. We're bringing a fish house down there. It's, uh, I've got a wrap all the way around the fish house. It's for Keep It Clean. It's got a, it's a ice fishing theme wrap and there's an outdoor display and everything. It's all ice fishing related. And, um, what it is, is trying to just convince people to be better, make better choices, pick up after themselves, don't be slobs. Uh, we got, uh, the budget for this came from a grant we received from the MPCA. And when we put together this budget, this, um, this project, we've never done the State Fair or anything like this before. We didn't include anything for clothing or uniforms or anything, so we're getting all these volunteers to come and help and staff and we don't have, what, like, what are we gonna wear? We should look good. We should stand out. We should, whatever. Um, the SWCD board authorized funds for this. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna do this regardless. The, my thought was, since we are county staff, it's a county SWCD cooperative venture for the most part. And, uh, thought this would be a good opportunity for the county to put the, we could put the county logo on the shirt as well as the SWCD logo and get some, uh, big advertising out of this. There's about two million people that attend the fair annually. We'll be located on the DNR grounds at the State Fair, so we're gonna be in a spot that is, uh, it's, I don't know, seventy-five feet away from the DNR fish ponds. I mean, it's a very visible, high-traffic area. Give me a lot of, uh, good publicity for our area of the state from us just wearing shirts around the area. Because that's kind of the, yeah, bottom line is it doesn't affect, um, levy or anything like that. I'm asking, asking for additional dollars, just taking, uh, five hundred dollars from one item and dumping it to another if, if you support that.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to, um, support, uh, reallocating, you know, funds within, uh, well, I don't know how to make that.
This is.
I wrote, yeah.
I wrote it up for you in the agenda bill. If you'd like, I could bring it to you.
My, my phone went dead and I can't see my agenda here, so.
Would you like it?
Diane has.
Whatever the wording is on the agenda, so.
All right. Second, Commissioner Sumner's, uh, you know, there was one, and then we'd like to, quick discussion, just wondering, are you talking uh, like really brightly colored t-shirts? Are you talking about polo shirts or, I mean, so many polo shirts, but, you know.
What, we, we were talking about doing polo shirts until we realized that we're gonna do a logo and stuff on the back.
Oh.
And that doesn't always look very good with polo shirts. So what, um, we're gonna go through Skeeter Stitch in town here, and what he recommended, and I think the direction we're headed, is we're gonna do fishing shirts. Since it's an ice fishing themed thing, so we'll do long-sleeved fishing shirts.
Okay.
And we'll put the, um, we'll have a little Keep It Clean logo on the front chest. And then we'll have a larger, um, it'll probably say like, be nice to the ice or something like that. And then we'll have the county logo and the SWCD logo and probably the Upper Red Lake Area Association logo on it.
It's probably better with the temperatures down at the State Fair, too.
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, I, I would much rather see you guys go in like, uh, the winter gear, you know, being that.
Well.
Made that, you're promoting ice fishing.
We are gonna be using this in the winter and we will have to have jackets and stuff. We're probably doing it all at the same time with the same logos, so.
All right, I don't think they'd be keeping themselves clean right now.
No.
No, we, we're in the discussion phase.
Yeah, all right, any more discussion that is pertinent to the subject? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved and have fun.
Thank you.
Great idea.
Joint Airport Zoning Board, can we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the proposed resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Uh, resolution and ballot language for lost. Uh, resolution and ballot language for lost.
Hey, go get Tom.
Okay, it's in our.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah. Uh, he's coming.
Mi- Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that we accept the resolution or that we accept the ballot language for the local sales tax. For the upcoming election.
Okay, is there a second?
Do we need to, do we need to? Mention that out loud, what exactly it is?
Uh.
As, as presented.
As presented, as presented.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Tom, is there anything, uh, any other thing you'd like to say about that, the language?
Uh. Mr. Chair, so you, you brought that, that's, I'm sorry, stepped out for the Red Pine quote.
Good, I'm glad you did.
Um, and uh, this is before you now, is that where we are on the agenda?
We have a motion and a second to approve the lost, the language for the lost.
I see.
And we're just asking if there's anything, do we need to read it or anything, or?
No.
Just hold on.
You don't need to read it, um, you can present it, uh, or I mean, you can approve it just as presented as you were saying. Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, um. How was the, the language related? I, I know I missed the last steering committee meeting, wondering if that. If this is the language that was proposed from that, from the committee or the, the um, consultant?
It was a com, uh, as far as I'm, I know, it was a combination of both.
Okay.
You know, it was presented to us, we looked through it, uh, made some suggestions and then, and the consultant was online. And then uh, they finessed it, uh, as we often do to make sure that uh. Everything was correct on it.
And then, Mr. Chair, I assume that our county attorneys also. Review that. Thank you.
Thumbs up. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, so moved. Ja- uh, jail steering committee appointment. Tom, you want to address that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Just was, um, I, I was approached by the mayor of the city of Bemidji, who sits on our steering committee, uh, has been appointed by you. Uh, who expressed some concerns that on occasion there may be conflicts of interest whereby, uh, the mayor would be, uh, maybe uncomfortable. In attending our steering committee meetings. And so, uh, he had requested that, uh, the county board consider an alter, alternative. Al- alternate, rather, uh, in his stead in those situations or occasions when he, uh, felt like there might be a conflict. Uh, they have discussed this with the city council and Lynn Eaton, uh, councillor Lynn Eaton was the one identified by the city. Uh, and so the uh, city is requesting, and that's why we have it on your agenda for tonight. That Lynn Eaton be approved as an appointed alternate for the mayor, and that's what's before you this evening.
So, Mr. Chair, Tom, I, uh, what potential conflict of interest, uh.
I was curious about that.
Yeah. Would the mayor have versus another person on the city council?
Right.
That's an excellent question and I, I can speak directly to the conflict that I think was, uh, highlighted a bit earlier, which may have been averted. Uh, but that the mayor sits on the Greater Bemidji Area Joint Planning Board. And as, as we were discussing as the steering committee and design and operations team, the project where we were going to be located, what the benefits were for properties and those sorts of things. He felt that he shouldn't hear those conversations because he would be getting information that the rest of the joint planning board members might not be getting. And therefore, uh, he would be just, he would be advantaged over them and that that might not be fair. In regards to the hearing of the issue when it came before, uh, the joint planning board. So, it's more in his role as a joint planning board. Member than I think it was as a city, uh, councillor.
Now, with the joint planning board going away though, that's gonna be a moot point. It's all gonna be this idiot, right?
In a couple of months, uh, but I mean.
So.
What? Step back from the joint planning board. I mean, I, I mean, I think it's important to have the mayor who represents the entire city on the steering committee for the jail.
And he's still gonna be on, he's just gonna appoint an alternate, right?
Well, I, sounds like the alternate will be taking his position.
Is that what he's talking about?
Well, I'm, I'm not certain if his long-term plan is to have the alternate take his position. Um, I hadn't heard that. Uh, my, my understanding is that in, in instances where, where the mayor believes there to be a conflict, the alternate would step in.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I kinda. I, I, I'm not too sure if it's something that I, I agree with and, and support, you know, just for the mayor to just come. To, you know, one meeting or every other meeting, kind of pick and choose. I mean, this is a huge project and I think, you know, we need some. Consistency and if, if we're gonna make an appointment, I would hope that. This appointment would be the permanent appointment, you know.
I, I don't have any qualms about councillor Eaton. I think he does a fine job on the city council, but I think it's. A little more impor- important to have the mayor who represents the entire city. On the steering committee.
Uh, I, I agree. I, I think that, uh, the mayor should be on it and should stick to, to his obligation of being on the steering committee and. And um, if he, if, you see something on the steering committee that is a potential conflict, which I don't know that there would be moving forward anyways. Um, then he could recuse himself or whatever and, and um, not, you know. You know, check out of that part of the meeting or something, but otherwise I don't, I don't think it should be changed.
Yeah, cuz I mean, I. Wha- what if I have a conflict and, you know, and can I, can I appoint somebody to? To, you know, fill in for me? So, it's, yeah, we, we, we have a committee and, and I think we should stick to it, is my, my thoughts.
As long, my feeling is as long as the, uh. Potential conflict has somewhat been, uh, resolved. That, uh, I'd like to see it go back to the city council and reconsider whether. Uh, they want to make the permanent change or not. That's mine.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I don't get the impression that this was intended to be a permanent change. I thought it was only an alternate, I think. Didn't Chairman Siki want an alternate in case he couldn't be at the meeting? What would be the difference?
I think his was a permanent.
No, his was permanent.
Permanent?
Yeah, it was permanent.
You know, this, this steering committee gets information on such a regular basis and if you just pop in once in a while. We've had a situation where somebody, you know, some people have been absent and, and then, you know, they need to. We need to find someone else, but it's more permanent rather than pick and choose.
Right.
I'd rather see that personally.
Okay. So, do we just not move on it then?
Yeah, you don't need to take a motion if your intention is to not take any action. You don't need to make a motion. I'll carry the message back to the mayor and, and uh, let them know.
And then if, if it's. If, if there are some other reasons, uh, I believe then he can express that in such a way that we can understand that it's, it's permanent.
No.
Okay. All right. At this time, I will accept a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D. Point oh five subdivision three.
Come on.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
To end the closed session and return to the open meeting.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. So moved. Right. Legislative lobbying issues or commissioners report.
We have to do a motion on.
Mr. Chair, I move that we have a special board meeting on Monday, August seventh at nine a.m. to discuss in closed session final property purchase agreement and a formal vote after closed session if that becomes an opportunity.
Second.
Mr. Chair. For a second. Do we need to include?
I'll do a separate motion.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved. Thank you for that correction, sir. Now, does there anyone want to share legislative lobbying or commissioner reports?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick things. AMC training coming up this Thursday near St. Cloud. I'll be going down for that. And then we had a land land, I'm sorry, not a land review committee, but a joint counties natural resources meeting on Monday this week that I attended, mostly a DNR update. That's it.
Okay. Who else? Tim?
Mr. Chair, I had several meetings. I did attend in place for Commissioner Sumner at the Black Creek Hamlets Board Meeting and then at the Black Creek Tri-County Board Meeting right after that. And we're now meeting in, just for future reference, like, you know, meeting in the forestry building now. Yeah, like we used to, yep. And then HRC, we had our annual meeting up in Bedette and we had Wale there too. And that was, that was really good and it took a tour of the tour of the distillery and that was good too. And so that was, that was fun and fairly well attended. Nice of Bedette to host this year. We rotate every year. Each county that's a member of the Headwaters Regional Development Commission. And then we had our Castle Lake Fire Association quarterly meeting as well and things are progressing. We're getting donations towards the new fire hall for Castle Lake. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved. Thank you for that correction, sir. Now, does there anyone want to share legislative lobbying or commissioner reports?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick things. AMC training coming up this Thursday near St. Cloud. I'll be going down for that. And then we had a land land, I'm sorry, not a land review committee, but a joint counties natural resources meeting on Monday this week that I attended, mostly a DNR update. That's it.
Okay. Who else? Tim?
Mr. Chair, I had several meetings. I did attend in place for Commissioner Sumner at the Black Creek Hamlets Board Meeting and then at the Black Creek Tri-County Board Meeting right after that. And we're now meeting in, just for future reference, like, you know, meeting in the forestry building now. Yeah, like we used to, yep. And then HRC, we had our annual meeting up in Bedette and we had Wale there too. And that was, that was really good and it took a tour of the tour of the distillery and that was good too. And so that was, that was fun and fairly well attended. It was nice of Bedette to host this year. We rotate every year. Each county that's a member of the Headwaters Regional Development Commission. And then we had our Castle Lake Fire Association quarterly meeting as well and things are progressing. We're getting donations towards the new fire hall for Castle Lake. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved. Thank you for that correction, sir. Now, does there anyone want to share legislative lobbying or commissioner reports?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick things. AMC training coming up this Thursday near St. Cloud. I'll be going down for that. And then we had a land land, I'm sorry, not a land review committee, but a joint counties natural resources meeting on Monday this week that I attended, mostly a DNR update. That's it.
Okay. Who else? Tim?
Mr. Chair, I had several meetings. I did attend in place for Commissioner Sumner at the Black Creek Hamlets Board Meeting and then at the Black Creek Tri-County Board Meeting right after that. And we're now meeting in, just for future reference, like, you know, meeting in the forestry building now. Yeah, like we used to, yep. And then HRC, we had our annual meeting up in Bedette and we had Wale there too. And that was, that was really good and it took a tour of the tour of the distillery and that was good too. And so that was, that was fun and fairly well attended. It was nice of Bedette to host this year. We rotate every year. Each county that's a member of the Headwaters Regional Development Commission. And then we had our Castle Lake Fire Association quarterly meeting as well and things are progressing. We're getting donations towards the new fire hall for Castle Lake. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved. Thank you for that correction, sir. Now, does there anyone want to share legislative lobbying or commissioner reports?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick things. AMC training coming up this Thursday near St. Cloud. I'll be going down for that. And then we had a land land, I'm sorry, not a land review committee, but a joint counties natural resources meeting on Monday this week that I attended, mostly a DNR update. That's it.
Okay. Who else? Tim?
Mr. Chair, for clarification, the seventh will be a special meeting for property negotiations. Come out of the negotiations and potentially announce the purchase or the property. Call that a night and then on the fifteenth, come back for a regular session and have a public comment. Okay.
Okay. Did you second that, Tim?
Yeah, the special or the public comment? Yeah, I second both.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved. Thank you for that correction, sir. Now, does there anyone want to share legislative lobbying or commissioner reports?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick things. AMC training coming up this Thursday near St. Cloud. I'll be going down for that. And then we had a land land, I'm sorry, not a land review committee, but a joint counties natural resources meeting on Monday this week that I attended, mostly a DNR update. That's it.
Okay. Who else? Tim?
Mr. Chair, I had several meetings. I did attend in place for Commissioner Sumner at the Black Creek Hamlets Board Meeting and then at the Black Creek Tri-County Board Meeting right after that. And we're now meeting in, just for future reference, like, you know, meeting in the forestry building now. Yeah, like we used to, yep. And then HRC, we had our annual meeting up in Bedette and we had Wale there too. And that was, that was really good and it took a tour of the tour of the distillery and that was good too. And so that was, that was fun and fairly well attended. It was nice of Bedette to host this year. We rotate every year. Each county that's a member of the Headwaters Regional Development Commission. And then we had our Castle Lake Fire Association quarterly meeting as well and things are progressing. We're getting donations towards the new fire hall for Castle Lake. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved. Thank you for that correction, sir. Now, does there anyone want to share legislative lobbying or commissioner reports?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick things. AMC training coming up this Thursday near St. Cloud. I'll be going down for that. And then we had a land land, I'm sorry, not a land review committee, but a joint counties natural resources meeting on Monday this week that I attended, mostly a DNR update. That's it.
Okay. Who else? Tim?
Mr. Chair, I had several meetings. I did attend in place for Commissioner Sumner at the Black Creek Hamlets Board Meeting and then at the Black Creek Tri-County Board Meeting right after that. And we're now meeting in, just for future reference, like, you know, meeting in the forestry building now. Yeah, like we used to, yep. And then HRC, we had our annual meeting up in Bedette and we had Wale there too. And that was, that was really good and it took a tour of the tour of the distillery and that was good too. And so that was, that was fun and fairly well attended. It was nice of Bedette to host this year. We rotate every year. Each county that's a member of the Headwaters Regional Development Commission. And then we had our Castle Lake Fire Association quarterly meeting as well and things are progressing. We're getting donations towards the new fire hall for Castle Lake. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved. Thank you for that correction, sir. Now, does there anyone want to share legislative lobbying or commissioner reports?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick things. AMC training coming up this Thursday near St. Cloud. I'll be going down for that. And then we had a land land, I'm sorry, not a land review committee, but a joint counties natural resources meeting on Monday this week that I attended, mostly a DNR update. That's it.
Okay. Who else? Tim?
Mr. Chair, for clarification, the seventh will be a special meeting for property negotiations. Come out of the negotiations and potentially announce the purchase or the property. Call that a night and then on the fifteenth, come back for a regular session and have a public comment. Okay.
Okay. Did you second that, Tim?
Yeah, the special or the public comment? Yeah, I second both.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved. Thank you for that correction, sir. Now, does there anyone want to share legislative lobbying or commissioner reports?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick things. AMC training coming up this Thursday near St. Cloud. I'll be going down for that. And then we had a land land, I'm sorry, not a land review committee, but a joint counties natural resources meeting on Monday this week that I attended, mostly a DNR update. That's it.
Okay. Who else? Tim?
Mr. Chair, I had several meetings. I did attend in place for Commissioner Sumner at the Black Creek Hamlets Board Meeting and then at the Black Creek Tri-County Board Meeting right after that. And we're now meeting in, just for future reference, like, you know, meeting in the forestry building now. Yeah, like we used to, yep. And then HRC, we had our annual meeting up in Bedette and we had Wale there too. And that was, that was really good and it took a tour of the tour of the distillery and that was good too. And so that was, that was fun and fairly well attended. It was nice of Bedette to host this year. We rotate every year. Each county that's a member of the Headwaters Regional Development Commission. And then we had our Castle Lake Fire Association quarterly meeting as well and things are progressing. We're getting donations towards the new fire hall for Castle Lake. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved. Thank you for that correction, sir. Now, does there anyone want to share legislative lobbying or commissioner reports?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick things. AMC training coming up this Thursday near St. Cloud. I'll be going down for that. And then we had a land land, I'm sorry, not a land review committee, but a joint counties natural resources meeting on Monday this week that I attended, mostly a DNR update. That's it.
Okay. Who else? Tim?
Mr. Chair, I had several meetings. I did attend in place for Commissioner Sumner at the Black Creek Hamlets Board Meeting and then at the Black Creek Tri-County Board Meeting right after that. And we're now meeting in, just for future reference, like, you know, meeting in the forestry building now. Yeah, like we used to, yep. And then HRC, we had our annual meeting up in Bedette and we had Wale there too. And that was, that was really good and it took a tour of the tour of the distillery and that was good too. And so that was, that was fun and fairly well attended. It was nice of Bedette to host this year. We rotate every year. Each county that's a member of the Headwaters Regional Development Commission. And then we had our Castle Lake Fire Association quarterly meeting as well and things are progressing. We're getting donations towards the new fire hall for Castle Lake. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved. Thank you for that correction, sir. Now, does there anyone want to share legislative lobbying or commissioner reports?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick things. AMC training coming up this Thursday near St. Cloud. I'll be going down for that. And then we had a land land, I'm sorry, not a land review committee, but a joint counties natural resources meeting on Monday this week that I attended, mostly a DNR update. That's it.
Okay. Who else? Tim?
Mr. Chair, I had several meetings. I did attend in place for Commissioner Sumner at the Black Creek Hamlets Board Meeting and then at the Black Creek Tri-County Board Meeting right after that. And we're now meeting in, just for future reference, like, you know, meeting in the forestry building now. Yeah, like we used to, yep. And then HRC, we had our annual meeting up in Bedette and we had Wale there too. And that was, that was really good and it took a tour of the tour of the distillery and that was good too. And so that was, that was fun and fairly well attended. It was nice of Bedette to host this year. We rotate every year. Each county that's a member of the Headwaters Regional Development Commission. And then we had our Castle Lake Fire Association quarterly meeting as well and things are progressing. We're getting donations towards the new fire hall for Castle Lake. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved.
Mr. Chair, I move that we have a special board meeting on Monday, August seventh at nine a.m. to discuss in closed session final property purchase agreement and a formal vote after closed session if if that becomes an opportunity.
Second.
Mr. Chair. For a second. Do we need to include?
I'll do a separate motion.
Okay. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Mr. Chair, I move that we have a public hearing on August fifteenth, our regularly scheduled board meeting for the purpose of being able to announce to the public our jail location.
Second.
Well, Mr. Chair, do you want to call on Administrator Barry?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. With respect, Commissioner Croson, the intention of the public hearing would be to gather input from the community. We are hopeful that the special session that you've just motioned on would be the announcement as well to the community. So you wouldn't be actually announcing it on the public hearing. You'd just be getting feedback from the community in regards to the previous announcement.
What he said. Public comment for the fifteenth.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, for clarification, the seventh will be a special meeting for property negotiations. Come out of the negotiations and potentially announce the purchase or the property. Call that a night and then on the fifteenth, come back for a regular session and have a public comment. Okay.
Okay. Did you second that, Tim?
Yeah, the special or the public comment? Yeah, I second both.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved. Thank you for that correction, sir. Now, does there anyone want to share legislative lobbying or commissioner reports?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick things. AMC training coming up this Thursday near St. Cloud. I'll be going down for that. And then we had a land land, I'm sorry, not a land review committee, but a joint counties natural resources meeting on Monday this week that I attended, mostly a DNR update. That's it.
Okay. Who else? Tim?
Mr. Chair, for clarification, the seventh will be a special meeting for property negotiations. Come out of the negotiations and potentially announce the purchase or the property. Call that a night and then on the fifteenth, come back for a regular session and have a public comment. Okay.
Okay. Did you second that, Tim?
Yeah, the special or the public comment? Yeah, I second both.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved. Thank you for that correction, sir. Now, does there anyone want to share legislative lobbying or commissioner reports?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick things. AMC training coming up this Thursday near St. Cloud. I'll be going down for that. And then we had a land land, I'm sorry, not a land review committee, but a joint counties natural resources meeting on Monday this week that I attended, mostly a DNR update. That's it.
Okay. Who else? Tim?
Mr. Chair, I, you know, I thank the management team and all the folks that have put together the employee appreciation celebration. It's always good to get out there in the courtyard and have some from Wale that is almost as good as Red Lake, but I do appreciate everybody's time and efforts and that. Also, you know, as at the Northwest Juvenile Center celebration earlier that day. So I think all around it was a a great day. So that is all I have for now. Thank you, Mr.
Okay. I just want to thank Diane for all the work she put into that appreciation day. Thank you, Diane.
And and Mr. Chair, I had several meetings. I did attend in place for Commissioner Sumner at the Black Creek Hamlets Board Meeting and then at the Black Creek Tri-County Board Meeting right after that. And we're now meeting in, just for future reference, like, you know, meeting in the forestry building now. Yeah, like we used to, yep. And then HRC, we had our annual meeting up in Bedette and we had Wale there too. And that was, that was really good and it took a tour of the tour of the distillery and that was good too. And so that was, that was fun and fairly well attended. It was nice of Bedette to host this year. We rotate every year. Each county that's a member of the Headwaters Regional Development Commission. And then we had our Castle Lake Fire Association quarterly meeting as well and things are progressing. We're getting donations towards the new fire hall for Castle Lake. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So moved.
No, you're, you're good.